All right, we will call to order the committee of the whole meeting. Note that all members are present, as well as members of the administration. Thank you for being here. So first, I will move to approve the minutes of the June 16th meeting.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing, none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes. Okay, so the only item of business tonight is discussing the report of the 2024 Charter Review Commission. So tonight, we're going to, my intention is that we'll go through each of those recommendations and have some discussion. We may even reach a decision of asking the Law Department to draft language. But first, we're going to talk about it. So we'll do that. First up, one of those, so just for a little background for anyone who doesn't know, we are a charter municipality. Our charter functions essentially like a constitution, and so it overrides everything we do. It is voted upon by the voters. And every 10 years, we form a Charter Review Commission, a citizen Charter Review Commission, to review that charter and make recommendations back to council. Council may take those recommendations and then place any of them or all of them on the ballot for voters to then vote whether or not to amend the charter accordingly. So what we're doing tonight is looking at each of those recommendations and seeing what we want to do. So one of those recommendations is the Charter Review Commission recommended that council consider language on the ballot that would give voters, would vote to give council the option to potentially vote using ranked choice voting in our municipality. This would affect specifically municipal elections. It would not affect school board elections because that is set by the state, but it would affect our municipal elections. It would not dictate that council would, or that we would use ranked choice voting. It would give council the option of, in the future if we wished, to implement ranked choice voting. So I thought it would be helpful tonight to do a little background on ranked choice voting. This isn't something that everyone's familiar with, and understanding how it could work, how it works other places, and just give us a little opportunity to dig into it and ask some questions of the experts. So with that, we have Justin Wells with us from Rank the Vote Ohio. And Justin, if you want to come up, you're welcome to either stand or sit, whatever is more comfortable for you. If you push that button, it should turn green.
Yes.
Welcome, Justin, and we've got your presentation up if you want to take it away.
Certainly. I would ask, could I have a little clicker just to move the slides? That works. Thank you all for having us. Like I said, yeah, okay. My name is Justin Mills. I'm the former executive director of Rank the Vote Ohio, and until three days ago, I was a resident. So I do want to ask, I know that the idea was that no one actually knows what ranked choice voting is, but I do actually want to ask how many people are at least aware of ranked choice voting? And in the crowd, too. Okay, so everyone at least has a passing familiarity with it. So for the few who don't, the idea of ranked choice voting is instead of just choosing the one, you rank your choices. As simple as that can be. So what we have on screen now is the concept of new ballots, and these are ones that are actually used. All of your choices are there. You fill in your first choice for the person that you want. You fill in your second choice for the person that you want, and so on. So you might be asking, why are we doing this? Why exactly are we actually pushing for ranked choice voting? The short answer being, American democracy is not entirely in the best of shape right now. And one of the most clear things that we know is that a staggering number of people simply do not vote. Much of the reason, there's many different reasons, but most of it comes down to some version of, why bother? For those who don't, alongside they're both the same and
All right, we will call to order the committee of the whole meeting. Note that all members are present, as well as members of the administration. Thank you for being here. So first, I will move to approve the minutes of the June 16th meeting.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing, none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes. Okay, so the only item of business tonight is discussing the report of the 2024 Charter Review Commission. So tonight, we're gonna, my intention is that we'll go through each of those recommendations and have some discussion. We may even reach a decision of asking the Law Department to draft language. But first, we're gonna talk about it. So we'll do that. First up, one of those, so just for a little background for anyone who doesn't know, we are a charter municipality. Our charter functions essentially like a constitution. And so it overrides everything we do. It is voted upon by the voters. And every 10 years, we form a Charter Review Commission, a Citizen Charter Review Commission, to review that charter and make recommendations back to council. Council may take those recommendations and then place any of them or all of them on the ballot for voters to then vote whether or not to amend the charter accordingly. So what we're doing tonight is looking at each of those recommendations and seeing what we want to do. So one of those recommendations is, the Charter Review Commission recommended that council consider language on the ballot that would give voters the option, or would give voters, would vote to give council the option to potentially vote using ranked choice voting in our municipality. This would affect specifically municipal elections. It would not affect school board elections because that is set by the state. But it would affect our municipal elections. It would not dictate that council would, or that we would use ranked choice voting. It would give council the option of, in the future if we wished, to implement ranked choice voting. So I thought it would be helpful tonight to do a little background on ranked choice voting. This isn't something that everyone's familiar with. And understanding how it could work, how it works other places, and just give us a little opportunity to dig into it and ask some questions of the experts. So with that, we have Justin Wells with us from Rank the Vote Ohio. And Justin, if you want to come up, you're welcome to either stand or sit, whatever is more comfortable for you. If you push that button, it should turn green.
Yes.
Welcome, Justin. And we've got your presentation up if you want to take it away.
Certainly. I would ask, could I have a little clicker just to move the slides? That works. Thank you all for having us. Like I said, yeah, okay. My name is Justin Wells. I'm the former executive director of Rank the Vote Ohio. And until three days ago, Lakewood was a resident. So I do want to ask, I know that the idea was that no one actually knows what ranked choice voting is, but I do actually want to ask, how many people are at least aware of ranked choice voting? And in the crowd, too. Okay, so everyone at least has a passing familiarity with it. So for the few who don't, the idea of ranked choice voting is instead of just choosing the one, you rank your choices. As simple as that can be. So what we have on screen now is the concept of new ballots. And these are ones that are actually used. All of your choices are there. You fill in your first choice for the person that you want. You fill in your second choice for the person that you want, and so on. So you might be asking, why are we doing this? Why exactly are we actually pushing for ranked choice voting? The short answer being, American democracy is not entirely in the best of shape right now. And one of the most clear things that we know is that a staggering number of people simply do not vote. Much of the reason, there's many different reasons, but most of it comes down to some version of, why bother? For those who don't. Alongside, they're both the same and the person that I want isn't actually on the ballot anyway. And so what we propose with ranked choice voting is a way to fix that. So going along with those questions of why people do not like to vote or feel that it's somehow, in some way worthless, the short answer is, people don't want to waste their votes. They don't want to spend their time on something that they otherwise do not actually feel is worth their effort. Some version of, say, the spoiler effect generally tends to be the most common issue for most voters in some way of trying to do something new, something different. The person that they actually like in some way cannot win. Or at least, that's usually how it's said. And what that spoiler effect then does is discourages new people from running, as well as for the few people who are somehow willing to push through that spoiler effect of being told that they're not gonna win anyway, that other people, other voters specifically, will still choose not to vote for that person, even if it's someone that they want. This happens in a lot of different ways. And I'm sure, as people who were elected, you have faced some version of that criticism or have heard it levied against someone else. So ranked choice voting. So as simple as this. Instead of choosing one person, you rank your choices. And specifically, what ranked choice voting asks for is not a plurality of your voters, but instead, a majority. You actually have to win instead of simply being, as many might put it, the least hated. So what we had before was a sample ballot. This is one that was used by the League of Women Voters in Maine to help people understand. Maine, as some of you might know, does use ranked choice voting in the entirety of their state, top to bottom. But how do we actually choose the winner? So what I'm going to show you right now is what is called the instant runoff option. The idea being, instead of having a race and then seeing who is going to win and then having runoffs to keep doing it, you instead just do the runoffs as part of the ballot was actually made. So here's how it works. In the current system, that person at 35 would win, but ranked choice says, we need a majority. So what we'll do instead is pretend that the person in last simply didn't exist. Every person who voted them as their number one will then get distributed out for whoever was their number two. We will then ask ourselves, is anyone at our 51% mark? No, we're gonna keep going then. We will keep pretending as though each of those people simply didn't exist until we make it to the end and a winner is found. This could be someone who might be considered either the spoiler. This might be the person who would have won anyway. The whole point is, we want a majority. We want the person that everyone actually likes the most cumulatively and not simply the person that everyone happens to favor, I guess, as their number one. So there's a lot of different things that this particularly changes. This might not be as relevant to you, but one of my personal loves of this is, we stopped a lot of the mudsinging because you actually have to get people to like you. And so what you will then do is try to get people to like you. And so by just putting everyone down, you won't actually get that. So it actually fosters an amount of cooperation. The most recent election in New York is actually a fantastic example of this, of Zorin Mondani and Brad Lander having a cross endorsement of each of them saying, vote me first and them second. And them actually running ads together and showing up at the same places because they understood how similar that they were and that they wanted people to actually come together with an amount of compromise to try to make things better. We also get to see a slightly better representation of what people actually want. New ideas get to surface because you actually get to have those talks. And we also get to see an increase in the amount of people who will show up. And there's a lot of words in these pages, so I'm not gonna ask you to read them. Please come back later. But what it starts to do is increase that representation. With more people actually showing up, more people feeling as though there is a reason why they should actually come out, you actually get a representation of your total voter base and of your actual city. These are a few more stats. These ones pulled from the League of Women Voters. And we have a national version of this that is Rank the Votes National. And we run and have run studies on these. This is, this particular slide, actually kind of used a few more words. But the idea being, the blue is before ranked choice voting was implemented and after ranked choice voting was implemented in the same cities over the same period of time. So the city that is on the left is the one that adopted ranked choice voting. The cities on the right are the ones that did not. It did not actually change the representation of the city councils that they happen to be in. This is another one of the studies that was done, University of Missouri, checking if the case that an increase in voter turnout would actually happen. And a general 10-point increase the entire way across the board of all voters. Because when you actually have someone that you want to vote for, you will. So the idea of ranked choice voting is that your vote is never exhausted. It is never wasted. There is no spoiler. And at least for me, one of my favorite parts is, there is no meta-voting. There is no trying to decide whom everyone else is going to vote for, and that is now the person that you should. But instead, you get to vote for the person that you want with the knowledge that you are not somehow wasting your vote or throwing the election, losing to a candidate that you don't want to see. And we actually know that people do it. It wasn't just a thing that some of the policy wonks, like myself would be one of them. I imagine as the people on the board, the policy wonks, you would be too. This is actually a thing that everyone wants to do. And a majority of people ranked all of their options, not just that they ranked a couple. But almost 90% of people will choose to rank multiple. But it gives you what you want, brings people out wanting to engage. It gives the voters more choice and more voice for what it is that they are doing. This is a little bit of a history, like I said. Maine is the first state to adopt ranked choice voting entirely. They did it in waves. Alaska is on there. Over 25 different states have it in some form or another in different places. Actually, I think one of my, one of the ones that I find to be one of the most interesting on here is the Texas Republican Party uses it entirely for just party elections. Because as far as a political strategy goes, you want the person that your voters want to be at the top of the ticket. So they use it entirely internally for their primaries and do not actually use it in the general election. And there's stuff there that I'm not gonna say. It is not something that is particularly new. Australia has had it for over 100 years. Ireland adopted it in 1914. India has, last time I checked, I'm a little behind, had 16 political parties. And that is only possible in a ranked choice system when you know that you can actually have some version of compromise and that your voice will actually matter and that you can find the person that you want. A bunch of different organizations use it around the country. The League of Women Voters is both in the room and are good friends of ours. And I know, use it, and generally endorse it as well. This is us flexing. We can skip that, but let's skip that last bit. I want to know if anyone has any questions about ranked choice voting. I went through this a little fast because I was told that I didn't have too much time. But I also want to give anyone the chance to ask as many questions that you might have. I know various versions of, that doesn't seem broke, we seem fine, why would we change this? Is usually it. And I would like to speak to that more, if you would let me. But I don't have any questions.
Thank you. So let's do pause. Council members' questions? Councilwoman Shubert?
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation and for the information today. Can you tell me a little bit about the transparency of the tally? I think that what we have currently is, when we have a recount, and we ask people, go back and recount those ballots, right? And probably Councilwoman Marks can talk to close races with, you know, 10 or 12 votes. Is this all done on the computer? How does, how does that work? And if there is a request for a recount, how would that work?
Oh, you can totally do this in person. Once again, Australia and Ireland did it in the 1900s. They didn't have computers then. Like, it really is something that you can have people sit in front of you and just recount by hand, if it really comes down to that. But the transparency is as transparent as you can be. You can show exactly who voted in what way, the numbers as they go through each round as you're looking for that 50-plus 1%. OPAVote happens to use very, ranked choice voting and in various forms of it. And you can actually see exactly how every person voted. You can obviously anonymize this. But you are able to see exactly how everyone votes and in which ways that the vote changes as it goes down the line.
Thank you. Thank you, I appreciate that. I didn't, I didn't consider that they didn't have computers 100 years ago. That's, that's very true. Can you talk a little bit about the Board of Elections and how they would manage this?
Sure. Almost every single company that creates these already has it because a lot of them sell to Maine and Alaska. So they have created the software already. Most likely, they'll probably try to, I don't know, scam you for a couple of dollars. But they do already have it and they all already work. So the Board of Elections would not actually need to even change their voting booth. It's really just an update in programming if it's not already available. It would potentially use a little bit more paper.
That's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll just, on the technical issue, say that I did look into this. And when this was before, at the State House, did some research. And the software that is currently used by our CogA Board of Elections and by the state, or the equipment is used in other places that do use ranked choice voting. And it looks like we would just require a software update in order to do this. It wouldn't require all new equipment or anything like that.
Yeah, that is usually what tends to happen in most of the places that take it. I don't work at the Board of Elections, so I don't know what they got.
Other questions from council members? Councilwoman Marks?
Thank you. Thanks for coming to help explain this more thoroughly. I spent a lot of time with Chris Bendel recently, and he explained this to me and sold me on it. So I feel pretty much in support of it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Marks. Other, Councilwoman Evans?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thanks for being here, for the information.
Thanks for having me.
I'm a big proponent of this, so I'm happy the Charter Review Commission brought it before us. And I'm hoping we can be, you know, a leader in this area for the region, certainly. So thank you for everybody who worked on this and for your time. Appreciate it.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you. Other council members? Vice President Baker, and then back to Councilwoman Shubert.
Thank you. And I, as a concept, you know, I read politics industry. And ranked choice voting is one way to kind of produce more, more appealing candidates, less divisive candidates. I think you get better governance outcomes. The question I have is, and I, has any other, has CogA County ever done it? So has the Board of Elections ever ran a ranked choice voting camp, like, election?
I could give you a little bit more detail on this, but I'm gonna tell you now that it's not fantastic. The short answer is, Ohio was actually the first state that ever actually had ranked choice voting. Ashes, Buehl County was actually the first one. It did. We were the leader in the country on it. Actually, one of the leaders in the world on ranked choice voting. And we had it for quite a while. The reason why we don't anymore, once again, not fantastic. Party bosses and generally racist organizations, specifically the KKK, marched to the streets specifically trying to shut down ranked choice voting because it started letting other people start to win in districts that they otherwise used to hold. So yes, but, and the reason why that we no longer have it is a, one of the more dark chapters of American history. So I'd say that one of the reasons why you should do this is to fight against the darker chapters of our history and try to make something better. And I, that, sorry, that wasn't supposed to be as grim, but...
No, no, and I, from a, from a policy public, I think it's the right thing. What I'm, what I'm interested in is just the practical, on-the-ground element of it. And has this Board of Elections ever? Because all this charter, at least as proposed by the Charter Review Commission, gives us the option to do it. And it leaves that to city councils' discretion before any election. The question I have is, is there any recent elections in Ohio? And this is just, I don't know the answer to this question, so I'm not trying to lead you anywhere. Has there any been, been any local elections in CogA County or the state of Ohio that have used it in the last, say, decade?
To my knowledge, there isn't any that have used it in the last decade. It has been some times since it was around. I believe one of the last times was in the 1940s and 1950s. I believe it was... 62, thank you, sorry. Specifically was the last time. Although I will say, I have taught six-year-olds how to do this. So as far as like actually teaching people, the people who don't want to learn have more made the decision not to.
No, and I appreciate...
Sorry if I'm reading into what you were saying. Apologize.
No, I, I think ranked choice voting creates better outcomes. I want the city to have the ability to do it. Because also, I think it could save us money on our primary elections and create a better system there. Having an election in September followed by one eight weeks later in November is hard. I'm just interested in kind of the practical, on-the-ground elements of it. And, you know, CogA County Board of Elections has a big job. You know, and election workers are, have been attacked, at least verbally, over the past couple of elections for being good public servants. So that's all I'm trying to think about and talk about here.
And I think that's fair. To that, like, you might say that they are, because they have not done it, like you, like you asked, in the last decade, 1960s. Yes, it would, to an extent, be creating that structure from the ground up. Although I would not say that it would be particularly different than what challenges they're otherwise facing. Usually, the attacks on, like... Usually, the attacks on, like, any person who is working in it isn't specifically because of the difficulty of the system itself or the actual tallying of the votes when you get down to it.
Councilwoman Hamilton-Stiner?
Yes. Although, yes.
Thanks for that, Angelina, because that's a very important consideration. So right now, the bill, the State House has convened for the summer, and they'll be back in September. The earliest would be like mid-September. The bill is still in the House Committee. It hasn't even gone to the full House. The other piece, and I left some information with Sarah, and y'all received this in email, but things with all these threads gets lost. But the State House, they don't have a legal department, so they have something called the Legislative Service Commission, and they serve as like your legal department. So they will analyze vet bills, vet them for legality, vet them for budget, all that kind of stuff. I gave Sarah an opinion, I printed it out, of their Legislative Service that says this, the way the bill is written, the prohibition does not apply to charter amendments. It applies to, you cannot enact ranked choice voting through ordinance or resolution. It's a big loophole. They knew it in advance before it went to the House, and they still did not touch the bill. So I don't know what that means. And it was Kyle Herman, by the way, our executive, former executive director, who brought that up. I don't know why, but he brought that up. They put it through their legal people, and it does not apply to charter because, as Sarah said at the beginning, charters are like you have your own constitution. So it's a bigger hurdle, if that helps.
Thank you. All right. Councilmembers, other questions? Councilwoman Strubig, did you?
That was my question.
Okay. All right, great. Yeah, and I did hand out that paper to, that opinion to councilmembers up here. Okay, I know, Vice President Baker?
Yeah, and I guess this is a question for the Law Department then, and perhaps it's better to give us this legal advice out on the floor, although they're perhaps giving each other legal advice right now. Is, it says, and we can get you a copy of this. It's the LSC's analysis, and I read it while the presentation was going on. And the way the Charter Review Commission proposed the ability for us to do ranked choice voting says, "Council shall by ordinance adopt either plurality voting or ranked choice voting." So I think in order for this to work for us, it would have to say, "The Charter has to do it." In order for us to preserve that legal argument, at least that's the way I read it.
Thank you, through President Keppel. I can tell you that's exactly the conversation we were having, Councilmember. So it brings that issue to the forefront. If we wanted to do this and to comply with what's before the House bill, the lower risk is to do it by charter and amend the charter to allow for ranked choice voting and take that issue directly to the people, assuming the bill holds up. Thank you.
Thank you. And another wrinkle with that, of course, is that the deadline for us to submit anything to the Board of Elections to be, if we wanted this on this November's ballot, is September 5th. So we won't necessarily know what is going to happen with this bill in the House before that deadline. So just information to be aware of. We do have some folks signed in for a public comment on this topic, so I want to have time for that. So we may call you back up if we have more questions, but...
President?
Yep. Councilwoman?
Thanks. So are you envisioning any additional elements of the report by the Charter Review Commission to also be brought forward, or is this the one and only?
My intention for this meeting is to go through each of them as much as we have time to do.
And then, secondly, on the ranked choice voting discussion, you know, I've talked to Mr. Bendel. Thanks for the one-on-one time. The positives that I see are culture of civil campaigning. That's great. We talked about, although I haven't heard it discussed today, engaging the general election voter, which by a series of many trends, gerrymandering, super PAC money, media being nothing but a kind of a pro-wrestling shout fest, have been cut out of the process. There's a case to be made that the primary system in America is not operating well. Pardon me. I'm glad that there's some demonstration that positives are occurring out there. I guess I'd like to know the sample size for what's supporting the advertised benefits of ranked choice voting. That's not in here. I don't think we have time to go into it, but maybe the follow-up.
Actually, it does. So I'll actually give you a little bit more, but that is the entirety of Maine.
What I mean, what I mean is how many jurisdictions, you know, you had a couple of cities that were alluded to, but is this dozens and hundreds or is this, you know, handful to date? I guess I'd like to know. And part of what, what I want to understand, what's the problem statement we're solving for in this proposal? Is there a Lakewood problem that this would solve for? Or is the intent to have Lakewood participate in a national advocacy campaign to change the voting norms in our country, which is a very worthy thing? Lakewood participates in a bunch of issues like that. However, typically, that's not committing a charter amendment change and the way that we conduct elections. It's a big contribution by, you know, potentially to contemplate for, hope for, and intended benefits. I mean, I guess that's maybe a question really for the Charter Review Commission and for colleagues.
Let's let Justin take a stab at it, and then we can...
Because it also does sound as though you have two. So the first one, you're asking on sample size, the entirety of Maine. However many jurisdictions that is Maine's population in 2016, I couldn't tell you, not off the top of my head. However, this also uses Santa Fe. Santa Fe has, I believe, last time I checked, like a million and change people. However, this is not just Santa Fe. When the University of Missouri started doing those, started putting in that information for how many people, generally, the 10% increase was more or less the standard average of increase that is in the general election. Primaries had a bump, although there wasn't enough information to say that it was better, more engaged candidates versus specifically ranked choice voting. With too many variables, it could have been anything. However, going into general elections, the 10% was actually more or less the general standard average. Some of them a little bit more, some of them a little bit less. But general increase, and that is, once again, the entirety of Maine, Santa Fe, and a few other cities that have also done this.
I think I could speak directly to what I think you're asking. So right now, it's two states, Alaska and Maine, but there's like over 60 cities, municipalities that have implemented. Is that closer to what you're asking?
Part of it, yeah.
Yeah. And with, and New York, again, we have this most recent example from like a week ago, which is phenomenal. And I can actually send you the breakdown. We have a ballot that was published from New York Board of Elections that just shows each round to get to that 50-plus. And so it's really just so timely and dead on. But there's quite a few municipalities, and we're, break the law, Ohio, we're bringing it a municipality at a time. It's not necessarily a problem in Lakewood, you know, that we're seeking to solve, but we are seeking to have better, more fair elections. And the more math we can get with this, the better. And it will, in other jurisdictions, counteract some of that gerrymandering stuff is what the promise is.
So, okay, I appreciate that. I'd like to study. The follow-on, though, is, is there more, Councilwoman Strubig asked about tally methods. So is there one method by which the tally works or are there multiple alternative methods?
There are different tallying methods. There is, the one that I showed you is the simplest, was the original, that is instant runoff, sometimes called the hair method, if you happen to look that one up. There is the Condorcet method, which is effectively, you could call it a matrix of checking who ranks the highest on all of them. That one, you could actually publish everyone's, and then everyone can do that math themselves. That one would be something that every single person can do. You can do it, to Councilwoman Strubig's question. That one would also be entirely easy to view. My personal favorite is proportional representation. That one is very similar to the instant runoff, except that it specifically works with multi-seat elections. That one is also something that you can show, although you probably actually have to use a computer for the sheer number of people. Though, that one has also been used prior to computers. That one has been used since the 19, I believe, 40s or 50s. Cincinnati had it, and that was also prior to computers. It is a little bit more math-intensive than the other ones. Otherwise, I would give you a little bit more on that one.
So the details matter.
Yes.
It sounds as if that important, critical detail is not necessarily decided as we're discussing the concept right now. But I'd be interested in making sure that the consequences and, you know, unintended consequences are understood. I like the idea of the transparency that probably is vitally important. So the reason I ask about the problem statement, so what are we solving for? Are we trying to engage those general election activists, or, excuse me, general election voters who may want more civility? Or are we actually setting up a system in which activists have more expression? You know, a lot of political reforms in America, whether that's term limits or gerrymandering, are really process disguising some other goal, which is, you know, somebody with an agenda wants to advance their goals, and they're not worried too much about the long-term impacts on the Ohio Constitution or whatever it might be. And I'm not saying that that's what's going on here, but I am asking the question in terms of a cautionary oversight thing, because we're talking about the Charter of the City impacts on the political culture of our town. So would this privilege the ideological extremes? Is this a third-party, you know, is this, people who voted for Jill Stein were frustrated, people who voted for Ralph Neve were frustrated, let's get a process reform so we get a better result? Because I don't think I'm interested in that. I would be interested in the thing that Mr. Bendel and I discussed, which is where the primary election makes so much of the choice in the political system, and yet 60% easily of the public doesn't vote until the general. But because of the arms race of politics, and I'm talking not about voters, I'm talking about everybody else, there have been a, the system's been rigged and hacked to make all the critical choices in the primary before the general election or the general public and the general election voter gets any say, any meaningful say. So I think ranked choice voting might help one or it might help the other. And, you know, what I'd like to see in Lakewood is, is, I think I've made it clear, you know, the general election voter, civil discourse. So I hope that, you know, would be what my colleagues also have in mind. And if there's not a problem that exists in Lakewood's elections, wouldn't a more prudent proposal be that we would support a resolution to other jurisdictions to say we support ranked choice voting? If, you know, so that's where, where, what, what goal are we trying to accomplish here?
Yes. Can I?
Yeah, we can. I just want to make sure, I see Councilwoman Hamilton-Stiner wanting to respond, who was on the Charter Review Commission. I see members of the Charter Review Commission here. I do have folks signed in to speak who are Lakewood residents who might be able to tell us why they are presumably here to support this, so, and answer to the question about what we're trying to fix. So I'll go to you first and then Councilwoman Hamilton-Stiner, and then I do want to get to public comment because I know some folks have to leave.
To that particular question of whether or not this helps the, as you put it, the activists or the general public, I do not consider those two to be different. One of the things that must be understood is activists are the general public. They are the more vocal versions of it, certainly. They are perhaps, you might say, the more motivated and the more able to do so, but I don't consider them different. And the, as you put it, the frustrated Jill Stein voter versus just the average person who gets to even vote in a Democratic Party primary are also not a different issue. They are different versions of the same problem, which is a system that incentivizes a two-party system. The thing that I said at the top of what I want to do with ranked choice voting is I want to move away from the concept of both a spoiler and strategic voting, because those are in many ways the same thing. The idea that you could have somehow voted wrong by picking the person that you like is inherently anti-democratic. But with a plurality system, with a, even you could say, start off with five parties, and a plurality system will always create two parties. It will forever shrink itself to make, to push every single person with the mechanics of the system, incentivize everyone to get behind only two options. It is itself always going to create exactly what we see now. So to your question, you might not see a problem with the way that Lakewood is run, but the system itself will continue to do it. It will continue to degrade until you get to two parties that absolutely hate each other because you can only vote for one because any, voting for anyone else is simply worthless. And coming back to what I said at the start of people not wanting to waste votes and also the reason why people do not vote are also from the same things. They all stem from the concept that you don't get a choice. Even pointing out what he said about 60% of the, of the populace effectively don't get to vote if they are not part of a primary system. And then extrapolating that only about 15% of any given primary is actually won by the entirety of the populace. They might win, say, 40% of the vote, but 40% of less than 50 still comes out to maybe 20 at best. That means that 20%, and I'm assuming this is what he told you, and this is for everyone else I'm saying this, that 20% effectively gets to say who wins and who becomes, who becomes the elected representative. That is itself the problem. The idea that you have to have shuffled it down as many times as you do is exactly the problem that ranked choice voting is trying to solve. There is not, at least to me, a difference between the two of them.
Okay. I do want to center this back to the Lakewood issue, and I'll go to Councilwoman Hamilton-Stiner, and then I do want to take the members of the Lakewood public who are here to tell us why they support this. And I'll just, I'll just quickly say, from my perspective of why is this a Lakewood problem or what is the problem in Lakewood? We do have nonpartisan municipal elections here, but, so the two-party thing is less of the issue, but it, what does happen is, because we do have a primary, and primary makes things more expensive, it makes it more challenging for people... makes things more expensive, it makes it more challenging for people with less money to be successful, which disadvantages women and minorities, and also leads to less representation. So, that's one of the issues. I could speak on that more, but I want to hear from the public. So, next up is, let me, actually, I'm going to take Teresa.
You're going to scratch me off. I thought I had to sign in.
I figured, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, no, you're fine. So, Teresa Permenter, I know you've got to take off, so I'll take you first, and then we'll go through the list.
Thank you, President. I'm Teresa Permenter, the League of Women Voters here in Lakewood. I am the chapter president, and I just wanted to say that the league, from top to bottom, really supports ranked-choice voting. So, from League US, League Ohio, and us here at League Lakewood, we feel that it does represent, or it gives a chance to have better democracy, and just getting the representation of women, people of color, like, just people that don't typically get elected in our country. So, it is, we're all about providing people the power for democracy, and getting them to the ballot, and getting that fair representation. So, I believe that ranked-choice voting is one of those tools to get there. And I have to get going, but thank you for letting me talk.
Thank you. Thanks so much for being here. All right. I'll go back up to the top with Chris Bindle. Oh, I should have said, for public comment, you state your name, and if you feel comfortable, your address for record, and you have up to five minutes to speak.
Thank you.
But you did fine, Teresa.
Chris Bindle, 1212 Hathaway. So, a lot of what I was going to say has already been touched on, which I kind of assumed was going to happen anyways, but I'll hopefully bring some more context to it. So, I originally showed up this fall when I first heard that the Charter Review Committee had recommended it. I didn't have a whole lot to say back then, except for like, hey, this is a great thing, I think you guys should do it. A little bit has changed since then. I've kind of dived really headfirst into this. And also, we have a ban bill that we're kind of dealing with. I was glad to hear a lot of talk about that. I brought a copy of that same argument, which I gave to the Law Department, but they pointed out the same issue that I was, noticed, that if we do this, we may have to do it all the way. We can't do a half-measure, because then we may end up running into that problem of them wanting to take our local government funds. So, there are a lot of great things about ranked-choice voting. I'm not, that's what he was here to do, is to talk about all the great things. I want to specifically talk about why I think we should do it here in Lakewood. I've lived in Lakewood my entire life. I would never recommend, and I've followed politics in Lakewood for over 20 years. I would never recommend anything our city to do unless I really thought it had a benefit for us. Now, it's not going to have big flashy, you know, make a huge impact that you might think, but I do think that it could improve elections in Lakewood, and if we can improve them, why wouldn't we? I know we already have nonpartisan elections. We don't have elections that are super, have a lot of animosity to them, but it happens. So, why not do something to help make that better? So, the first thing I want to talk about is getting rid of the primary. First benefit, getting rid of the primary, we save money. Sure, the county may have to spend a little bit of money to upgrade our machines, but if we save that money, then there's a, eventually there'll be a net win there. On top of that, I know me and Councilman Bullock talked a little bit about this, like, trying to figure out where the cutoff should be for, you know, when to have a primary and when not. And it was a phone call, so I wasn't really full there, but like, the standard is, like, if there are more than five people, you have a primary. That, the whole idea with ranked-choice voting is top five. So, if you have five people, you put them in the general. If you have more than five people, you can have a primary to get it down to five people. And that kind of, the, other, different places do it different ways, but that seems to be kind of the gold standard, is five, top five. And then it makes that whole ranked-choice system work very smoothly. You don't have the primary that has a very low voter turnout. You get all the voters at the general, they only have to go out once. You increase voter turnout, because people get to vote for who they actually want, and you end up with general support for whoever wins. And that is important. Not everyone's going to get their first choice, but everybody's going to have somebody that they can put their, you know, support behind, and that's important. And I think that could improve things for people in Lakewood. Like I said, it's not going to be a huge change, but there are going to be people in Lakewood that that makes a difference to them. And that same idea of animosity or negative campaigning that I know Councilman Bullock talked about, you know, we haven't had a lot of that, but especially when it came around to the hospital talks, it got real nasty at points. If you are trying to go for, if not their first, someone's second choice, you know, you're going to pull back a little bit on some of those extreme views, and try and be level with people, and get more real, and it just evens things out. And I think that could be very beneficial for Lakewood. Going over my checklist. It's already been touched on, but it, because, I mean, we don't have parties, but getting rid of that primary and having to do two elections, it opens it up for more people to get involved. More people can jump it, put their hat in the ring. They don't have to worry about that whole, well, only two people are going to be on the, you know, ballot. No, I can be on the ballot, and people can hear what I have to say. And I might not be everyone's first choice, but I might have enough good things to say that there's enough people in the city that really want to support that. You know, I might have a little bit from column A and a little bit of column B that actually like what I have to say. Yeah, and then my last thing is, because of that last point, more people will have representation, and more people will come out to vote. I know Lakewood has a pretty good voter turnout, but it could always get better. So, those are my points.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry. The one thing I want to say is, I, I didn't say specifically, but in the Charter Review Committee, there was someone who said that, you know, they didn't want a solution to a problem we don't have, and those were kind of my, we don't necess, those are the solutions, or those are the problems that we could solve.
Thank you. Yeah, and just for clarity for folks, because it is a little, most people pay more attention to federal and state elections than they do to local elections, and because our local election, municipal election is nonpartisan, we still do and have had primaries, though, and we were one person away from this coming year having a primary again. And it, so, it's, could be everybody jumbled together, but you still have a primary, which still makes it more expensive. So, any case. Next up, Glenn Campbell.
Hi, Glenn Campbell, 15305 Lanning Avenue. I would echo a lot of what's been said before. The, I think the, the benefits and the upsides of ranked-choice voting are well-established here. I, I think why it's useful for, for Lakewood, I would just reiterate what Chris said about avoiding the primary expense and the hassle. It's, it's better for both you all, you know, the, the candidates, as well as the citizens. I mean, just because primary turnout is so poor, especially for municipal elections. I mean, we really need to empower the, the voter, the vaster swath of voters to have a real say in things. I, I think, I remember the, the at-large race from, I think it was a cycle ago, where I would have loved to have had, had ranked-choice voting in that. We had a lot of really good candidates, and like, the elimination, the primary was just frustrating. I, and, so, so I, tho, those are the benefits for Lakewood. For me, though, to answer, answer Councilman Bullock's question, for me, the reason I'm active on this issue is more to be a model, not so much for the, for the nation, Councilman Bullock, but for the state. I mean, we have seen where the state is doing everything in its power to, to limit the, the full, broad participation of voters through things like, you know, the efforts against the gerrymandering initiative. I think this is, I, I would like to see my city, that I'm very proud of, and I'm proud of the representation here, and I know many of my neighbors and, and friends in Lakewood feel the same. I'd like to see us help lead on this. Maybe not carry the entire weight, but if we make the right move, and if we're in the vanguard, it may become contagious, and we, it, it may give us a foothold to challenge this, this potential state law in one way or, or another. One thing I'd, I'd like to close with is, I think a lot of you know that I do a fair amount of voter engagement, canvassing, voter registration, talking to voters. People want more choices. We, and you all, as very, you know, responsible and conscientious public servants, I, I think you need to be attentive to that. We, we can't, we, we can't ignore the repeated call for people who, who want more choice, and the precision of choice. I love ranked-choice voting, because it allows, it would allow me to rank, and I, I just love the, the precision of it. I've talked to a lot of people who, who just crave for that choice, and I think we risk the long-term health of our democracy even further if we don't take opportunities like the opportunity the city has before it now. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and then Dean Jackson.
Thank you. Can you hear me? Am I in the mic? Thank you so much for your time and your attention. I was honored to be part of the Charter Review Commission. I'm honored to be here, speaking for you again today. I did write remarks, most of which are in the e-comment Angelina mentioned, and since most of them have already, I think, been said better by other people today, I'm not going to read them, but I do want to hit a few points. The first is, just to reiterate, there are Lakewood problems that this solves. Most people have gone through them already, but Lakewood is blessed with a large and talented pool of candidates. This is on show in this year's at-large race, in which twice as many people are running as there are seats to be won. Ranked-choice voting would award those seats to the candidates who truly enjoy the broadest support. The elimination of primaries also brings benefits to Lakewood, makes elections, elections less costly to hold. It makes campaigns less costly to run, which encourages more candidates to enter the race, and it boosts voter participation by eliminating the typical drop-off in turnout between the primary and the general elections. So, there are actual Lakewood problems that this solves, but to Councilman Bullock's question about whether or not this is also part of a national advocacy campaign, I think the answer is yes and, right? Lakewood doesn't have to dream small. We, this community is a gem on Ohio's northern coast. When I moved here three years ago, I could have moved to any part of the country, any municipality in the country. I had my pick. I chose to bring my family here. And if we can't do this, if we don't think we can do this, why do we think any other Cohio, the community in Ohio could do this? With our advantages, with our educated populace, our tax base, our progressive traditions, Lakewood and Cuyahoga County more broadly can do this, and in fact, Cuyahoga County has done it in the past. And so, to that point, if anyone's going to do it, if we're going to make a brave experiment to improve our democracy, which I, I think needs it, I don't think that's controversial, and we're afraid to start it, then why should anyone else be brave enough to try? On the question of specific method of ranked-choice voting, it's true, there are a lot of options, the details do matter. I think we discussed, and at one point maybe had drafted language that suggested the method we were thinking about, was the single transferable vote, which you could look more into. I think that's a simple method that maximizes the sort of consensus-building element, right? You try to get to that 50% plus-one mark, candidates are eliminated one by one. Also, to Councilwoman Strebig's question, note that every election in the state of Ohio is audited. I'll say that again. Every election in the state of Ohio is audited. That's actually something that started here in Cuyahoga County when Jane Platten read the Board of Elections, because in the early 2000s, we had an election that went so terribly that people were actually prosecuted, and we started auditing the election as a transparency measure. And you know what people said? You know what people said to Jane Platten when she tried to do this? I wrote a report about this last year. I got to interview about it. It was a lot of fun. They said, "That's insane. That's too much work. We don't want to do that." Sometimes you've got to make the Board of Elections do things it doesn't want to do for the good of democracy, right? Remember that they're bureaucrats, too. On, in term, on the question and the number of districts that this, or that this affects, in addition to the entirety of Maine, and dozens of cities across the country, including New York, our most populous city, every Alaskan Senate district is elected by ranked-choice voting. So, we have quite a big sample size, actually, to look at for political science. This isn't a radical or new idea. It's actually something that's well-tested. In my last comment on ranked-choice voting, and then I'll pivot to a very quick comment on another one of our proposals, is that I studied political science in school. I have a master's degree in international affairs from the University of Chicago, bachelor's in political science from Wright State University down in Dayton, and I remember taking a graduate seminar on comparative political institutions. And the professor said to us on the first day of class, you know, political science is a soft science. A lot of what we do isn't really scientific. A lot of the things that happen in the world of politics can't be measured the way that you measure things in a laboratory. Electoral systems can. You can measure the contribution of political science to the world. You can measure the difference between different constitutional designs on political outcomes. So, follow the science. Read the science. This is scientifically a good thing for the city of Lakewood, for the state of Ohio, for the United States of America, and, dare I say, the world. The last thing I wanted to say is, we did make a number of other recommendations, and I'd want to just flag the recommendation about council pay. I know none of you want to be the person to stand up and say, "I think we deserve more money." I think you deserve more money. I think it will encourage a broader type of person to run for office, and so I urge you to take a look at that as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. Did anyone else want to speak who hadn't signed in?
Jim Woolley.
Yep, sure, come on up.
Jim Woolley, I was on the Charter Commission. I live in Lake Avenue, and I, maybe as a follow-up to what Tom, Councilman Bullock was saying, and just by way of background, I'm a lawyer, have been for a long time. I've taught at, at law school level, I've taught a case, and I've taught at the constitutional level. And what I would ask this, you're, you're saying like, the way that's going to have to happen is, we're going to have to have a charter amendment approving ranked-choice voting, because that's going to give us the protection against some other action, right? We need, we need the amendment approving ranked-choice voting. And what I would ask you to consider is whether or not that's something that you really need to think about doing now, right? You amend constitutions, it's a constitutional amendment, when you, you can identify a specific problem that the people that are governed by that document are suffering under. We have a Fourth, Fifth, Sixth, and Eighth Amendment to the Constitution, because people were suffering under a tyrannical king who was prosecuting people. There were specific things relating to that population that needed to be addressed. And this ranked-choice voting thing sounds great, but I still haven't heard anybody tell me what's happened with the way we've picked you all and the mayor, and not the school board, because we're not doing ranked-choice voting for the school board. What's happened that's been wrong that we need to correct now? Thank you.
Yes, Councilwoman Hamilton-Stainer.
Thank you. I would argue that we are becoming the city that we claim to be. We are becoming a city that is truly representative of the people that make up this community. And until my appointment, we had not had a person of color on the city council. We had not had a black woman on the city council. So, I am here because of an appointment, and we will see if I am able to break that barrier that will exist in November. And if we had had a primary, we would have had all of us to come out, and I am new to this, and campaigning and everything else, and at a, more of a disadvantage, even as an incumbent, for a lot of the other people I am running against, one person would have been knocked off. So, we would have had a primary. If just one more person had filed, maybe someone had wanted to file, but they, they understand the parameters, and maybe perhaps they said, "I'm not going to run, because I don't want to go through a primary." We would have had to have a primary to knock off one, maybe more than that. Glenn had talked about four years ago, I believe there was 11, 12 candidates, I can't remember. Eight, so eight candidates. So, there were eight candidates, and we had a primary to knock off two candidates. And then in the general election, it got down to three. So, the problem that we are solving in Lakewood is the lack of representation that exists through having to have a primary and/or a general election. That is the problem that we're solving. And it's not a problem that doesn't affect people that don't look like me, but it certainly affects people that looks like me, because we're not seen, we're not visible, we don't have those voices, we don't have that representation. So, that is the problem that we are solving. One of the problems that we are solving. So that is the problem that we are solving, one of the problems that we are solving. And I would hope that there are enough people in our community that believe that that is a problem, and they want to see a change to that.
Thank you. Okay, so to the question of, so we have about 20, nope, 19 minutes left in this meeting. We have the other items that the Charter Review Commission recommended as well. I don't think we're going to have time to cover all of them today. So the next thing would be to talk about next steps on this. So my, probably, yeah, Director Varga.
Thank you, Council President. I just, so everybody on council has the information. What the Legislative Service Commission is recommending in that legal opinion is something that Ms. Swallow and I will look at. We're new to it. But I just want you all to be familiar with what this document that was presented to us says from the Legislative Service Commission. It says that if you do it by charter, right now, arguably the bill as stated would not prevent the charter amendment, but it would prevent the ordinance. But the service goes on and says the bill, the House bill, could be amended to clarify whether the approval of a charter amendment regarding ranked choice voting should result in the loss of local governance funds. So theoretically, or presumably, it's still an open question until that House bill is resolved, just so you have that information. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes. asking for legal advice, we might want to give them time to review and offer us that legal advice, not on the public floor. Does that sound like a good plan? Okay. So, what I, yes, Councilman Bullock.
Pardon me, I got a choke. I just want to compliment the deliberation tonight. A lot of people I respect on this dius and in the audience. Glenn, you do certainly probably earn the blue ribbon for most voter engagement on all kinds of good causes, and I've been happy to support you. I am myself an activist on all kinds of issues. And Dean, it was my pleasure to support your appointment to the Charter Commission. You're very thoughtful, so thank you for all the discussion and analysis. You know, I think this has resembled something like Mr. Woolley's constitutional law class. I enjoy that. I think our work improves when we really test and stress what the proposal is. I think that's appropriate when we're talking about charter amendments. To my colleague, Councilwoman Angelina Hamilton Steiner, certainly improving and expanding equity is a very worthy goal. It's something that we can always improve. So that's a very well-stated statement. I'll conclude by saying, changes to the process, whether it's legislative or voting, they change the game, but they don't eliminate the game. I think we're hoping that we can kind of take politics out of politics. And maybe there's a case to be made that this is a good step to take. I wrote down removing the primary. I'm inclined to think that is a good step. But beware that there's still going to, there's going to be gaming of this new system if it were to be adopted. And I also think that the tallying system that might be contemplated is crucial to what this might look like, what impacts it might have, and how much of an investment towards this broader goal that our community might be making. So I guess my own support after whatever process we contemplate will hinge upon those questions. I just want to be thoughtful. And I, you know, if the microeconomic incentives for candidates is to be outlandish and loud and extreme, because that can get you a plurality, which then somehow cascades into a 50.1% majority, that doesn't favor the general election candidate or civility or common sense. It would favor something else. Maybe that's okay. I'm just being, trying to reason through to the best of my ability. So thank you for the discussion. It's, we don't often go this deep, and I enjoy.
Thanks. That's why I thought it was important that we dig a little deeper into this and have the opportunity to hear from some experts and from the community on this topic. So thank you all. Okay, so we have 14 minutes. So we do have the other items recommended by the Charter Commission. I know, we discussed them some when the Charter Commission presented them to us. One, and to Mr. Jackson's point about the council salaries, I believe Assistant Director Swallow, I think, sent some information on this, that, that the way, actually, I'm just going to turn it over to you. Would you mind giving us a refresher about that?
I would be happy to. The amendment as proposed by the Charter Review Commission, and I will take responsibility for this, would violate the state ethics law, and I did not realize that until after we had finished the report. So unfortunately, the way that that is currently proposed, it would not be allowed to happen. There is, we did look at a lot of different ways that can get around that interim prohibition in salaries, and the way that the county and other communities have done it is by adopting legislation with a certain increase based on, I don't want to say the Consumer Price Index or anything like that, but setting up a way to allow raises to happen during a council member's election or during their term. However, that legislation has to be enacted prior to that term of office. So if something like that were to occur, it would have a cascading effect throughout every elected official's term of office, if that makes sense.
So, I mean, repeat back to you what I think I just heard you say, is that if, so, the way it's drafted is not viable with the ethics law, but something could be drafted to the extent that there are automatic adjustments based on Consumer Price Index, let's say, but that wouldn't go into effect until the next, the start of the next term? Is that?
Correct. And then ultimately what happens is the legislation is adopted prior to that individual term of office. So once that current term expires, then it becomes applicable at the next term of office. That's essentially how the county did it.
I see. The other, thank you. The other items that the Charter Review Commission recommended, as I recall, were mostly fairly straightforward, and we didn't get a lot of questions from council members. So.
Redistricting was interesting.
Redistricting was a little interesting, yeah. So, but I want to be thoughtful, too, is, so where we are now in terms of timeline. So if we do want to get these on the November ballot, we would need to have them introduced at the next full council meeting, have a committee meeting, and then potentially pass them at the first meeting in September in order to get them on the ballot in November. So if we want to do that, we would need to have drafts of each of them. I would imagine that could be on the ballot, or be on the docket at the next full council meeting. We could have a committee meeting and have the full discussion of each of them and vote whether or not to further them favorably out of committee, back to full council, and then take that vote at that first meeting in September. To do that, we're going to have to either do it ourselves or ask the Law Department to draft each of these into legislation, because we're not going to have time in the next 10 minutes to go deeply through each of them. So, that is what I, if we think we want this on the November ballot, that's the timeframe we would need to work within. And I will open it up to thoughts about that timeframe or suggestions. No? All right. Yes, Councilman Hamilton Steiner.
I'm okay with that timeline, as long as the Law Department is willing to help work on and draft legislation.
Yeah, I have the language from the Charter Review Commission report. I can easily transfer that into legislation. Likely, I would do it in separate pieces of legislation so that there's not a lot of amendments, but if there's language that, you know, we determine should be changed, we'll have the opportunity to do that in committee.
Thank you. Vice President Baker.
Yeah, and I do, I do think there's a world in which, once the stock ordinance is created, you essentially just cut and paste, and it's exhibited, so it's Exhibit A through, I think, E.
And I actually have this in Word format, so.
And so I think there's a world in which this perhaps would show some fidelity and appreciation for the Charter Review Commission as we put them all up and talk about them all, and then determine which ones we want to take forward. I think that would be good and provide a little bit more opportunity for us to discuss each of them. Because each, you know, some are more perfunctory, how we, you know, kind of amend or repeal ordinances, and then the redistricting is interesting, will have a real effect on people, you know, if you could talk about that. So, and also have to think about who's going to be the champion of these when they're on the ballot, right? So it's either now or two years from now. I think you'd want to line it up with the municipal election, so I think this is our opportunity to do it. And if we can get it introduced next meeting, I think we can try to have some committee meetings to talk about it.
Quick question.
Councilman Bullock.
We could do it next year, too, right? There's no requirement that it be on.
It could be in the midterm.
Yeah. So, you know, if there's some consensus around some of these, you know, we could, we could ask for them to be timely on our agenda and for others to reserve the ability to keep working on it. There'll be a, we anticipate a higher turnout in even-year elections, but, you know, I don't know that charter amendments have historically been all that fraught or difficult for the general public. Yeah, it probably just depends on what it is and who's supporting it. So if there's some thoughtful consensus by city leaders, and I include community leaders along with city leaders, behind something even on an even-year ballot, I don't think we'd have to assume that it'd be too difficult in 2026 to pass it. Just a thought. But as far as, you know, I'm receptive, I thought the, I'm trying to quickly review the word redistricting proposal. I'd certainly be happy to consider that.
Thank you. Yeah, there is something, you know, we don't have necessarily a certain deadline unless we, we do have a deadline if we want to get it on for November. There is something to be said for putting this before in a general election, for a even-year election, in that it would go to more voters. There's also something to be said for, you know, if we're, these Charter Review Commission recognize that the opportunity to do better, and we can do better sooner, so that's also something to be considered as well. So, so let's, I'm going to make a motion to ask the Law Department to draft language around each of the Charter Review Commission's recommendations.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes. So hopefully, we will, we'll plan to get those on the next full council meeting docket, and we may have to be creative with scheduling our committee meeting on that, as I'm looking at the calendar, because we do have things on the following. So that may be a date other than a Monday, but we'll stay tuned about that. Okay. Any further comments from council members? All right. No further business before community of the whole. Without objection, we are adjourned. We will start full council meeting in about five minutes.[1476.87] We will start full council meeting in about five minutes. All right, we will call to order the July 7th meeting of City Council. If you're able, please rise for the Pledge of Legion. We'll now pause for a moment of silence. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice President Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Bullock.
Here.
Councilmember Evans.
Here.
President Kepel.
Here.
Councilmember Marks. Councilmember Steiner. Councilmember Strebig.
Here.
Reading and disposal of the minutes of the regular meeting of Council held June 16, 2025.
Move to approve without the necessity of a reading.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Reading and disposal of the minutes of the June 24, 2025, community conversation.
Move to approve without the necessity of a reading.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? I'll just note the community conversations have been very interesting to have, to get out there and talk with the residents, very worthwhile. And we heard a lot of good feedback from those residents' ideas and really appreciate the clerks taking these minutes and facilitating those conversations. Any further discussion on the motion to approve the minutes? All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Reading and disposal of the minutes of the July 2, 2025, community conversation.
Move to approve without the necessity of a reading.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes. Without objection, I'd like to move Item 7 to the top.
Item 7, Resolution 2025-33, a resolution to recognize and celebrate the many contributions of the Church of the Ascension on the 150th anniversary of its founding and to recognize its important historical role as the City of Lakewood's longest continuously operating church.
I'll move to adopt.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, and I imagine Councilwoman Marks would like to make a few, say a few words.
Thank you, President Kepel. I just like, would like to say that the Church of the Ascension, and Father Black is here, who's pastor of the church, he's here tonight, is a remarkable church in the City of Lakewood that has been fully functioning since, for over 150 years. It's a church that is very accepting of anyone who wants to attend. And if you've never been in the church, I highly recommend you visit. It's a beautiful little church. It's like a little jewel on Detroit, next to Lakewood Garden Center. And right now, they're housing a display of wedding dresses, of weddings that have been held in the church that predate the 1900s. It's a remarkable exhibit that has been put together by Gregory Szent, who is a German teacher at Lakewood High School and longtime, lifetime resident of the City of Lakewood and longtime member of the church. This is a display that is really presented with love and respect for all the hard work. He's had people send these wedding dresses from all over the country. But the church itself is having a grand celebration on the 26th of July that I encourage you all to check out the program that they're having to learn more about the historical significance of the Church of the Ascension. There are so many people, families, that have been members of this church who carry the names of streets in Lakewood. When I walked through the church and was given a bit of the history from Greg Szent, I was amazed at the significance this church had within the city. So I encourage you all to check it out. You don't have to be a member of the church to attend a service or to visit the church and see what it's about and its historical significance to the City of Lakewood. And I'm very proud to present this resolution to Father Black and the president of the Board of the Church of the Ascension, Joe Scambalone. So thank you, Father, for coming and thanks for your contribution to the City of Lakewood and continuing to offer services there at the Church of the Ascension. We're so happy to have you. Thank you.
Thank you. Other council members? Other discussion? Father, did you want to say any few words? You're welcome to come up to the microphone. Did we have anyone signed in to speak on this? You don't have to, but I thought you might want to.
Our president would like to say a word as well. He's a member, a resident of Lakewood. I would like to say that I was a teacher in Lakewood schools before I went to seminary. Taught at Emerson, while it was still a middle school. And I know the importance of community engagement, involvement, and it's always been something I think Lakewood does well. And I want to thank the council for acknowledging this aspect of our church. Because whether or not anyone's religious, our tagline is that God loves you, no exceptions. And we strive to really embrace and lift up inclusion and involvement and welcome everybody. And so we do a lot of community things right on our grounds. We're fortunate to have lots of property there. It's a blessing and a responsibility. But the blessing is that, like, for the last 14 years, in the summer, we do what's called Frankfurter Fridays. And we grill hamburgers and hot dogs and set up cornhole and make circles of chairs and just let people gather in community. We're not trying to push religion down anyone's face or throat, but we do, of course, offer prayer for those who would like. We show the church because it's a beautiful place for anyone. But also, we feed people. And you know, when people have a place to sit and eat, they can build community. Because Jesus said to love your neighbor, and we believe that we can't love our neighbors if we don't know our neighbors. And so I just thank Councilwoman Marks for recognizing the church, for the council for taking the time. It really matters to me personally and to our church that the communities stand together and support each other. So thank you.
Hi, my name is Joe Scambalone, and I've been in Lakewood for about 30 years. I came to Lakewood, you know, immediately fell in love. This place is, you know, wide open arms, lots of different people, lots of different thoughts, lots of different things to do. And I have my kids here. My kids are in school. Once again, a great institution. So thanks again to Cindy Marks and the council for recognizing the Church of the Ascension. We like to think of ourselves also as, you know, wide open arms with lots of different varying people and opinions and thoughts and things to do. Like Father Vincent said, we have free and open things that people can just come and kind of be themselves. So thank you again.
Thank you. All right, we do have a ceremonial copy of the resolution, so there's no further discussion from council. We'll go ahead and take the vote, and then we'll invite anyone who wants to join us for a picture in the front. All right, on the motion to adopt the resolution, all those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes. And we'll do a picture right down in front right here.
Item 1, Report from Housing, Planning and Development Committee Regarding Meeting Held June 23, 2025.
Vice President Baker.
Thank you. No written reports, so I'll give an oral report. We had two agenda items that were pretty interesting. One was a proposal by Housing or Building Commissioner Parmally to amend Lakewoodified ordinances 1775 to basically add, you know, the ability for folks to have a more natural front yard plantings while still maintaining some safety elements with sightlines and some corners. Fruitful discussion amongst committee members as well as members of the public. Some members of the public came and explained their own experience with front yard plantings. So we committed to continue to work with Commissioner Parmally and our colleagues and the public to come up with an ordinance that works for everyone. So that work is ongoing, and we hope to come back to the committee with some updates and information on that soon. The second agenda item was a communication and resolution from the Planning Department, Director Byington and Development Officer Wyman, about the five-year consolidated HUDD plan. A lot of interesting data in this plan, but essentially what it is, is there are lots of communities in Northeast Ohio that joined together to create this consolidated HUDD plan. And it gives you a large window and kind of broad area to collect data and then identify areas where HUDD funding can go. And then it's updated every five years. So it was a fruitful discussion, a lot of great data within that document, a lot of discussion by committee members, and we ultimately recommended full approval of the resolution to full council tonight. That's your report. I'll make a motion to receive the file.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Item 2, Resolution 2025-28, a resolution to take effect immediately, authorizing and directing the mayor to submit Lakewood's fiscal year '25 to fiscal year '29 five-year consolidated plan as approved by the Citizens Advisory Committee to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, which includes dollar allocations and activities to be funded with federal CDBG, ESG, and home investment partnership program resources during the above-mentioned five-year period and incorporates the city's fiscal year '25 annual action plan, which serves as the city's application to HUDD for fiscal year 2025 CDBG, ESG, and home funds.
I'll first move to amend to strike pages 3 through 6.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. That's just, those pages were meant to be on the communication and got on the wrong document, so that's all that is. And any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And then I will move to adopt.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? Councilman Bullock.
Thanks, Madam President. It's always good to have these periodic reviews of the plan. Sometimes they're annual plans, in this case, a five-year plan. Thank you to Mr. Wyman, Director Byington, and many others in preparing this. Also Lakewood residents Marshall Mall and Rexika, who are consultants on the report and spent considerable time helping us get informed. It always does remind me of a recurring question, and I'd like to plant the seed and ask for any updates that the administration can share. Are we communicating with HUDD about amendments or changes to the way they calculate? And they keep Lakewood grouped with other communities such that the rental assistance programs and the homelessness assistance programs, homelessness assistance programs are essentially not sufficiently funded to be effective, given the recent property value increases in the last, depending on how you measure, six years, four years? I'm getting that feedback, and there are some things we may do to improve that if HUDD were to engage with us and dialogue with us. They very well could also say no, but it's worth, I, in my opinion, it's worth us continually knocking on their door so that the funds that we do receive and administer and do a good job of complying with the requirements could be that much more effective.
We'll take every opportunity we can to communicate Lakewood's particular situation to HUDD and make sure that they're aware of our local housing market. The fact that it's particularly strong has been for quite some time. And communicate to them that any flexibility they might offer to accommodate that would be much appreciated.
Brief follow-up, Madam President. If there's another one upcoming, could potentially City Council Representative engage in that dialogue, such as the chair of the Housing, Planning, and Development Committee?
I would defer to.
Yeah, that's a way of just engaging and showing community interest.
Sure, yeah.
Certainly, certainly should those opportunities arise, the council would be engaged in that process.
Thank you. OK, thanks. Thank you. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none on the motion to adopt. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Item three, report from joint meeting of the Animal Safety and Welfare Advisory Board meeting held June 23, 2025.
Councilmember Strebig.
Thank you. This is with the Public Safety, right? Okay, very good. The Public Safety Committee met with representatives from La Swab and Claus on June 23 to continue the conversation with the Law Director, Mr. Vargo, and the Animal Control Officer, Mr. Crumley, in regards to the TRN program. The Law Department has drafted a version of an ordinance that we reviewed and recommended some changes to. We are awaiting a new draft from the Law Department that includes training for community cat caregivers, removes penalties against these caregivers, and directs them to work with the City Animal Control Officer, Mr. Crumley, to provide care for our community cats.
Move to receive and file that oral report.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Item four, report from the Joint Meeting of Committee of the Whole and Planning Commission held June 30, 2025.
Dear colleagues, Committee of the Whole and Planning Commission held a joint meeting on Monday, June 23, 2025, for the purposes of discussing Ordinance 17-2025 to establish the Complete and Active Streets Education Advisory Board, or CASE Board, for the purpose of collaborating with city officials regarding facilitating safe, effective, and enjoyable multimodal community usage of public right-of-way corridors. All members of council were present except for Councilmember Evans, as were members of the Planning Commission, except for Commissioner Nick LaPointe. Members of the administration present were Mayor George, Director Vargo, Public Works Director Gordon, Assistant Planning Director Boss. Members of the public were also in attendance, and all spoke in favor of the CASE Advisory Board. The discussion largely centered around the scope and function of the board as advisory, as well as the composition of the board. Amendments were made to include a member of the public with experience as a public transit user and an ex-official member from the schools. I expect to introduce a substitute version soon with some minor additional changes based on the feedback. Move to receive and file that report.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Item five, report from Committee of the Whole meeting held today, July 7, 2025.
Colleagues, Committee of the Whole met earlier this evening. You were all there, so you know, at 6 o'clock for the purpose of discussing the recommendations of the Charter Review Commission. We began and spent almost the entirety of the meeting discussing the recommendation from the Charter Review Commission to put a ballot initiative forward that would give voters the opportunity to vote, to give council the opportunity to enact ranked choice voting for municipal elections. We had Justin Wells, original co-executive director of Rank the Vote Ohio, give a presentation on how ranked choice voting works and the benefits. He pointed out that cities that adopt ranked choice voting have an approximately 20% increase in representation for people of color compared to 2% for comparable cities that did not, a significant increase in female representation. And although he didn't mention this, it is true that Ohio ranks in the bottom of women in state legislative office, partly due to not being able to start in local government. Ranked choice voting also tends to see a temporary increase in voter turnout compared to primary and runoff elections, with no change in the number of error votes. Mr. Wells also noted that 87% of voters in Maine's first ranked choice voting election ranked all choices, not just their top, and that Australia and Ireland have been using ranked choice voting for 100 years, and that India, which uses ranked choice voting, has 16 political parties made possible through ranked choice voting. League of Women Voters also supports ranked choice voting at the national, state, and local level, and a member of the public from the League of Women Voters, Lakewood, spoke in favor of the ranked choice voting options, as did all the other members of the public who spoke. Council members asked a variety of questions regarding the need for ranked choice voting in Lakewood and practical and legal considerations. The committee voted to ask the Law Department to draft language on each of the Charter Review Commission's recommendations to be introduced at the next full council meeting and discussed further in committee to decide when and whether to put it before the voters in November.
Move to receive and file that report.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Item six, Ordinance 21-2025, an ordinance to take effect immediately authorizing the transfer in advance of certain funds.
Move to defer.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? I'll just say for those following on the audience, we're deferring because this has already been referred to the Finance Committee where it is currently, and will be discussed there before being referred back to us. All right, on the motion to defer, all those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Item eight, announcement from Councilmember Steiner regarding appointment to the Lakewood Animal Safety and Welfare Advisory Board.
Councilmember Steiner.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Item nine, report from Councilmember Strebig regarding the June 17 Community Recreation and Education Commission meeting.
Councilmember Strebig.
Thank you. Dear colleagues, the Lakewood Community Recreation and Education Commission, also known as CREC, met for their monthly public meeting on Tuesday, June 17, at 6:00 p.m. at the TAF Center for Innovation. Commissioners interviewed two candidates, Chris Ferrone and Daniel McRae, for the open seat on this commission. Two additional candidates are also scheduled for interviews. Updates from the Coordinator of Community Recreation and Education, Leslie Favor Krogman, were given on the continued maintenance of the baseball and softball fields. Users of these facilities include 842 children, in addition to adult softball and kickball teams. Both city pools are open and hosting swim teams and swim lessons, and after a pilot program, adaptive aquatics are underway at the high school pool. Safety Town has started, and visits from the police and fire department are happening. Adaptive camps are full to capacity, and weekly field trips are occurring with kids connection. The department is planning, or I should say, has planned, to march and buy candy for the July 4 parade, where they were recognized as the grand marshal to honor and celebrate 100 years of serving Lakewood residents. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll move to receive and file that communication.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? I'll just note, thank you, Councilmember Strebig. We have been asking for liaisons in the different groups to report back to council so we can keep up with what's going on in the community. So, I appreciate that. Thank you. All right, on the motion to receive and file, all those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Item 10, report from Councilmember Strebig regarding the June 26 Youth Council meeting.
Councilmember Strebig again.
Dear colleagues, the Lakewood Youth Council met for their monthly public meeting on Thursday, June 26, at 6:00 p.m. in the auditorium at City Hall here. The meeting was called to order by Cora Barcelona. Minutes were approved, and a mental health committee report was given by Mel Deermert. Mel met with Melinda Denez with the Miles Group to discuss an upcoming presentation on drug overdose at the Women's Club Pavilion in mid-August. Mel encouraged the group to attend and bring others to join the meetings. Group Advisor Amy Shodden informed the group that the City Law Department had approved the bylaw amendments and would be coming before City Council for approval. Elections were held for the 2025-2026 Lakewood Youth Council. Every member in attendance ran for an office. I was very thrilled for that. Each stood, introduced themselves, and explained why they should be elected. After the votes were tallied, the advisor announced the results. Chairperson Mel Deermert, Vice Chairperson Alessio Materna, Secretary Cece Weidemeyer, and Vice Secretary Cora Barcelona. Applications to join the council, the youth council, are now being accepted and will be reviewed when the youth council returns from their July recess in August.
Thank you. I'll move to receive and file that communication.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Item 11, communication from Mayor George regarding purchase of 1470 Warren Road.
Mayor George.
Dear President Keppel and members of City Council, following this communication is a resolution that, if adopted, would authorize the mayor to execute a purchase agreement and necessary closing paperwork for the acquisition of both the south building and property at the former Lakewood Board of Education site, 1470 Warren Road. The administration believes this property would be a solution for the current spatial constraints within our existing 1958 City Hall. Most prominently, this property acquisition would allow for the long overdue expansion of our police department and court space while consolidating various administrative departments to a centralized location more easily accessible to the public and to allow for a seamless customer experience for all. Under the purchase agreement, the city will purchase the property for 1.5 million. The second set of documents and attached hereto are accompanying 2025 appropriation ordinances with Exhibits A and B to set forth our appropriation requests for the 1.5 million purchase price, which will be funded through monies within the City of Lakewood's land acquisition fund. We ask that you refer this letter to an appropriate committee for further review. The city contemplates completing the transaction no later than September 5, and thus, your timely consideration is requested. Thank you.
Thank you. I will first move to refer this communication to Committee of the Whole.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Kick off discussion here a little bit. So, just in terms of general process, I anticipate referring the other two items to Committee of the Whole as well. So, items typically by charter, things are of permanent nature, need to be read three times on three separate dates. Being read means that it appears on a docket, like it is tonight, on the first docket of a full council meeting, gets referred to committee. It may, we may address it all in one committee meeting, it may take multiple committee meetings, and then once the committee, if the committee deems it ready, it gets referred back to full council for a final vote. We can only vote on things at a full council meeting. So, it's a little bit of a process. Regarding this specific topic, so this kind of legislative package. So, the topic of crunch space at City Hall, particularly in the police department, isn't new. I remember touring the police department with Chief Kochak and Councilmember Rader back in 2021, and while then Chief Kochak was excited to show some of the improvements that had been made, it was clear that space was beyond tight. Some of the lockers were too small to hold modern police gear. The fitness room was not exactly the type of space that would encourage its use or the recruitment of new officers. And the women's locker room was too small to accommodate all of the officers and dispatchers on staff then. Since then, we have significantly increased the percentage of officers who are female, which I consider a huge positive for our city. Recognizing the need to create appropriate space for these officers, the administration asked council to allocate ARPA funds to improve the locker room situation. A request that we happily granted, unfortunately, the Law Department later advised the administration and council that updated guidance from the federal government would not allow us to use ARPA funds for this purpose. This is, by the way, the same thing that happened to funds council had allocated for backup power at Cove. At the beginning of 2024, therefore, council held an emergency retreat meeting to figure out our next budget priorities, given this information, and Councilwoman Strebig and I identified policewoman's locker room as one of our budget priorities to give to the administration. That priority was then memorialized in a communication between Mayor George and myself and placed on the public record. That communication expressed our intent to work together in good faith to find alternative paths to achieving shared priorities, two of those shared priorities being the sustainable and reliable backup power for Cove and ensuring that female members of our safety forces have sufficient appropriate locker room spaces. I mentioned the Cove power because even though the mayor signed this communication with me, recognizing the reason that there was not backup power at Cove last summer was because of changing federal guidance and that we would work together in good faith to find alternative paths to fund the proposal for sustainable backup power that council had both proposed and approved. Last summer, although that had happened, last summer she went around telling everyone who would listen that it was council's fault. This caused a huge erosion of council's trust. Nevertheless, the importance of addressing the crowding issues remained a priority for me and for others on council. So, at the final meeting of City Council in December of 2024, the mayor and I again introduced a joint letter, this one to council to initiate discussion of the space study that had been completed in the previous year and the assessment report completed by Weber Murphy Fox Architects. At the Committee of the Whole meeting on February 3, 2025, the administration presented this report along with the WMF consultant. While the information presented at that meeting seemed to reflect a fair amount of due diligence in answering the questions of, is there enough space at City Hall, and can enough reconfiguration within the existing footprint create enough space, there were many remaining questions to be explored. When asked by council about other options beyond the presented addition to the police station, the consultant indicated that he had been told to stop investigating other expansion options. Council members asked several questions on the record about possible expansion options and asked that the administration provide more research on these options. At the conclusion of this meeting, the administration said that this was the beginning of a conversation. On February 11, Chief Story and I met, and he asked me about next steps and timeline. And I said then that council needed the unbiased informational data regarding expansion options as requested by council and necessary to make an informed decision about how to solve the space challenges. Some of the options for addressing the space needs that council asked the administration to research were things such as filling in the U in the back, expanding into the garage, expanding onto the front lawn, expanding the annex, et cetera. Unfortunately, unbiased data is not what we got next. What we got next was an article appearing in Cleveland.com on May 28, in which the mayor announced a plan to pitch City Council on moving City Hall to Warren Road. Then, instead of sending City Council the unbiased data that was requested in order for the administration and council to make an informed and transparent decision together about how to solve the space problem, the mayor sent out an email to staff essentially announcing the move to Warren Road as a done deal. Similarly to how a few years ago, she declared that privatization and moving of dispatch was happening without talking to council first. I understand that the pace of the legislative process can be frustrating, but it is important to remember that it was the questioning and due diligence of council about the dispatch situation that led to the full facts being covered and the retention of dispatch. Instead of placing on the council docket all of the research the administration had done, answering council's questions about potential ways to solve the space issue, instead they placed a letter on the docket regurgitating the issues and announcing the preferred solution without adequate documentation. Instead of starting with the question of, how can we best address the space issues, the administration seems to have started with, how can we justify buying the Warren Road building? To force some level of the due diligence owed to our constituents and staff, I asked the administration to provide some minimal data in writing to council prior to scheduling a meeting to discuss the assertion that the Warren Road solution was best. In a meeting with Director Byington on May 9, I provided more guidance on the type of information needed. On May 21, enough was provided to justify scheduling the meeting, which I anticipated to include Weber Murphy Fox or other such experts who could provide more detailed answers to questions about the various ways to address the space issues, costs, benefits, drawbacks of different types of additions with supporting documents, details about other properties considers, apples-to-apples comparisons of all the elements. Again, unfortunately, that's not what we got. At the June 16 meeting, Weber Murphy Fox wasn't there, and rather than having an independent expert, the administration instead put a city employee in the unenviable and inappropriate position of having to try to come up with answers about potential construction costs on the spot and without proper research or documentation, a task that would normally be performed by an independent third-party expert. Instead of facilitating a public follow-up meeting to the first, that was supposed to be the beginning of a conversation, the administration requested a and announcing the preferred solution without adequate documentation. Instead of starting with the question of, how can we best address the space issues? The administration seems to have started with, how can we justify buying the Warren Road building? To force some level of the due diligence owed to our constituents and staff, I asked the administration to provide some minimal data in writing to council prior to scheduling a meeting to discuss the assertion that the Warren Road solution was best. In a meeting with Director Byington on May 9th, I provided more guidance on the type of information needed. On May 21st, enough was provided to justify scheduling the meeting, which I anticipated to include Weber-Murphy Fox or other such experts who could provide more detailed answers to questions about the various ways to address the space issues. Costs, benefits, drawbacks of different types of additions with supporting documents, details about other properties considers, apples-to-apples comparisons of all the elements. Again, unfortunately, that's not what we got. At the June 16th meeting, Weber-Murphy Fox wasn't there. And rather than having an independent expert, the administration instead put a city employee in the unenviable and inappropriate position of having to try to come up with answers about potential constructions costs on the spot and without proper research or documentation, a task that would normally be performed by an independent third-party expert. Instead of facilitating a public follow-up meeting to the first that was supposed to be the beginning of a conversation, the administration requested a behind-closed-doors meeting to discuss acquiring their preferred solution. During the public part of this meeting, council members once again requested more information about all of the possible options of solving the space issues. Council members also asked questions regarding how the two-building solution would work, how many additional staff would be required, what would be the ongoing operational costs, and many other logistical questions which the administration was not prepared to fully answer. Council members expressed their commitment to find the best solution to solve the space problem that would create a better workplace for our hard-working staff, provide efficient and effective customer service for the public, increase accessibility and safety, and be the most financially prudent. Given that the mayor ran on transparency, it was reasonable for council and the community to assume that there would be more public meetings digging into the data around each option. Again, unfortunately, that is not what we got. Two days after this meeting, the mayor signed a letter of intent with Liberty Development regarding the purchase of the Warren Road property. They had not mentioned their plan to do so at the public council meeting just two days prior, even when asked about timeline and next steps. They did not notify council that they had signed this letter until over a week later in an email. In that email, the mayor indicated that the, quote, "LOI does not create a binding obligation to purchase the building, but allows time for the city to perform our full analysis." Given all of the many times that council had requested more detailed and data-based analysis, one might have expected the administration to next come back to us with that analysis as well as the answers to all of our other questions. Once again, unfortunately, this is not what we got. What we got was this communication that is before us now in accompanying legislation being submitted by the administration for the docket without warning to council leadership. What we got was a letter of support from ASME that was sent before the docket went public, indicating that the administration preferred to reach out to them to provide pressure on council rather than providing council with the facts that we need and that the public and our staff deserve in order for us to make a huge financial decision that would have major impacts on how our government functions and serves our constituents. I have spent most of my career as a public union employee. I'm the daughter of two public school teachers. I believe firmly that our staff deserve quality working conditions, and I desperately want that solution for them. I am ready to fund the right solution after a thorough vetting process. The Warren Road solution might be the best option to solve the space problems. However, the administration's obfuscation and refusal to partner with council on open, data-based, public discussion has unfortunately made it impossible to trust the recommendation at this time. I am sad and disappointed with the administration's approach, which, while it may be politically slick, does not facilitate good governance, nor does it make council likely to trust the limited information given by the administration without independent verification. To do that independent verification and to hold the appropriate public hearings for transparency to our residents and employees will take time beyond the September 5th deadline requested by the administration. The administration has had five months between the February meeting and June meeting to acquire and provide the data that is insufficient. Council will need a few months for our independent consultant to provide sufficient data for a full investigation and then for public discussion and deliberation on which path is best. Even if council were to bypass proper investigation in order to pass this legislation on the administration's proposed timeline, it would take some additional time to complete the purchase. And then the administration has said it would take about 18 months to prepare the Warren Road property. And that's assuming that crews working on a building even older than this one don't run into setbacks. Once the work there is completed, the work here will have to begin. So it is very possible that we would be looking at two years of continued unacceptable locker room conditions for our female police officers and cramping for the whole department and others. I say, let's not wait to make it better. Let's look at some temporary solutions, such as a portable locker room or finding temporary office space for the planning department so that police department expansion can begin right away. Let's relieve the most pressing pain point for our employees while we plan and then build a long-term solution that is based on data transparency and is supportive of efficient and effective work and customer service and fiscally responsible to both our employees and the public. As the daughter of two public school teachers and a former public library employee, I know firsthand how the workspace of employees can too easily be pushed to the bottom of priorities for public entities on tight budgets and with many needs. I strenuously believe that it is both morally correct and a good employee retention policy to offer quality work environments for our staff, and I intend to make sure that we do it as soon as responsibly possible. But I think we need to do it the right way.
Madam President, if I may respond?
I'm going to go to Councilmember Evans first. Councilmember Evans.
Thank you, Chair Keppel. I share the president's frustration with this process. This conversation, such as it were, about potentially moving City Hall has escalated from an idea to a fully baked plan at breakneck speed. We all on council understand completely the needs that are affecting the city right now, our space constraints, especially for the LPD. We're facing very real concerns that we want to address, but I'm going to go into the timeline of this project as well for a few things. As President Keppel mentioned, on February 3rd, we were informed of the administration's intention to look pretty aggressively at solutions to an overcrowded City Hall. At that time, myself and my colleagues all asked about what temporary solutions we could have, especially again for the LPD, knowing that even if we were to go ahead with a building project at this time, you're talking about two years in the future. So what can we do now? We never received answers to that. And again, when I asked specifically, are there any ideas on the table? Where are we in this process? I was told they were just starting to brainstorm. So that's on February 3rd. In April, we saw the plans from WMF, and those were pitched as being proof that any expansion or renovation of City Hall would be unworkable, though only a small addition to the east side of the building was ever studied. On May 27th, we received a message from the mayor, an email, that we could jeopardize the move of City Hall if we delayed action on this. So it seems kind of clear by that that this was already far into the, you know, beyond the early-stage planning process and brainstorming. On the 6/16 council meeting, we were told by Chief of Staff Story that we deserved answers to all our questions and would get them, and we have not received answers to those. President Keppel already talked about the LOI, how that was signed. Without us knowing, we weren't even made aware of it until eight days later. And here we are on July 7th with a purchase agreement on the docket. There's been no sensitive debate on this issue. Administration did offer to sit with council members one or two at a time to discuss this, but something in this magnitude needs to be taken up in this venue, in front of the public. We're talking about a once-in-a-lifetime project that is going to cost tens of millions of dollars. This isn't what collaborative government looks like. Council has been presented exactly one plan for how to tackle the space problem. One, we've repeatedly asked for additional information and reasoning why certain planning decisions were made, but we're not getting answers. One of the reasons the administration is pitching this as a great idea is that it centralizes city government. And every time we hear about this, I see nothing like that happening. This venue, the room we're in, the best place that people can interact with their local government will remain in this building, not in the new City Hall. There will be duplicative offices for folks in this building and in City Hall. That does not sound efficient to me, and it certainly doesn't sound like centralization. Getting back to the timeline, this body has desperately been trying to pass Complete Streets ordinance, common sense legislation that will make our streets safer for all, for well over a year, longer than I've been on council. We've run into roadblock after roadblock. Yet here we are, expected to approve tens of millions of dollars in investment in a plan we've barely seen with no other options in a matter of months. We need to take our time to make the best decision for our community, and I support Council President Keppel in saying, if we have to get our own experts to give us the numbers and the data and the comparisons we need, I'm supportive of that process and looking forward to it. Thank you.
If I may?
Yes, go ahead. Mayor George.
So there's a lot of unfortunate accusations there that it's really disappointing to hear from a president of council. And I'm not going to address any of these misguided accusations now. What I will discuss is the issue before us, which is something we've been discussing for years now, stemming from a budget for a City Hall space assessment back in 2024. We went through that process, and it became crystal clear that this City Hall no longer fits the needs of our employees. Back in December, we joined in a communication to discuss the issues at hand and how to move forward. And since then, the administration has been working very hard to find a solution for our staff and for the residents of Lakewood to have a better customer experience. And multiple times over the last few weeks, we've reached out to City Council. On 6/17, Director Byington requested to have meetings with City Council to discuss questions. Those emails went unanswered. On June 23rd, Director Byington sent a follow-up email requesting members to come meet with us so we could have a productive conversation to make sure that all questions are answered. This is a very similar process to what we do for big pieces of legislation, similar that we've done, President Keppel, for Complete Streets. On 6/26, I sent an email discussing the LOI. And in that email, I wrote that we are more than happy to meet with council members to discuss any and all questions. To date, we have not received a response to that offer and are moving forward with this process. Please let me know if you have any questions. I think we've reached out many times to get questions answered for City Council, and no one has taken up on that question to date except for Councilman Bullock, which I appreciate. So we're moving through the process. We have a document in front of you that will give three readings to make a purchase on the Board of Ed building for our staff. There's no question that that Board of Ed building could go to a private developer at any day. In fact, that's recently discussed in the last couple of weeks. We have a once-in-a-generation opportunity to provide a new space for our administrative staff and the space that our police department needs for our community. And I request that City Council work with us on this process. Thank you.
Thank you. Just to clarify, those offers to discuss in private with not a majority of council for a couple of weeks were not the same as answering the questions that we asked on the public record on the public record.
Ma'am, I can answer anything on public record at any time, and I'm happy.
I am speaking, Mayor. I still have the floor. I will give you the floor again if you wish. So, those opportunities to answer questions in private, to ask Director Byington questions, council members may or may not take you up on those offers. This body may not, by law, meet with the majority of us to deliberate, as the administration's fond of pointing out to us. We may not make decisions, except that we do it on the public record. So silence does not equal consent, as I'm sure the police chief is well aware. So, just because we may or may not have met in private about what information was given, what we were looking for was the various answers to questions that we have asked on the public record that have not been given on the public record.
If I may?
You may.
I'm glad our public can now see the temperament of our City Council president. This is a challenge we face all the time in working with her. I will also say that you personally have met in my office on numerous occasions to discuss legislation. That is an effective process to iron out some kinks and details. That was the request, and I'll give you an example. When I was on City Council, this process really mirrors the process the city had when we acquired Cove Community Center. And I was on City Council at the time. And I did have quite a few questions about that process and about the purchase. And I took it upon myself, I met in, you know, my current office, the current mayor's office at the time, and sat with him. And we sat down, and we addressed the questions. And at the end of the day, I felt comfortable moving forward. That's simply all I'm asking, is for council to have a conversation and to get questions answered.
At this point, what is being asked of us is to determine whether we're going to spend millions of public dollars on a building on a plan that we don't fully understand and that we're, within a very short period of time, when we still have our questions about whether this is the right path forward, we were still in the middle of investigating how to solve the space issues, not whether we can afford this building. So I will make motions to refer these to Committee of the Whole. I just don't expect that we will complete our independent investigation by September 5th.
And if I may, there will be serious jeopardy, and we can get into this in the public dialogue, of course, there is serious jeopardy of that building going if we prolong this after September 5th. So the council would need to understand that if it's not signed by the 5th, you know, this protects us and our ability to have site control of that building. But we've all seen how other buildings in our landlocked city have gone, and there is serious jeopardy of the building no longer being available. And then we're at a place where we don't have enough space for our staff, and that's the reality.
Understood. All right. Other members of council, Director Byington.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify from my stance here that the questions that were asked for us to respond to at just the last committee meeting, which wasn't that long ago, we have been working on those. And the full intent was to provide that information at the committee meeting. So it was not intended to be given to you privately. When I reached out, it was more so in regard to what you had already been seeing both publicly and in the executive session, to be fair, to make sure you understood. But the questions that you asked of me, those answers will be coming in the public meeting. Just for clarification.
Thank you, Director Byington. For further clarification, do those answers go back to the previous meetings when we asked about the costs of doing various other expansions here at City Hall?
So if you recall, I did give the numbers for the U. You already had the numbers for the East Edition. We've talked to the architect and the building commissioner in regard to building onto the front, which both of them said is a non-starter for a few reasons. So I'd be happy to go over that in more detail or have Weber-Murphy Fox come in or the building commissioner to explain that at the next committee meeting when this is deferred, if that would be helpful. But we have looked into the front. If there are other options that I'm missing, please let me know, and I will look into those as well. But those are the ones that I remember.
I would encourage folks to go back and re-watch these meetings, and we can get a list of those questions that we've still been waiting for.
I think the point here is that council was still in the process of assessing whether or not a two-building solution was, that was one of the possible solutions. We were still gathering data on other solutions. And then, this one was submitted as the full baked solution. But thank you, Director Byington, for that clarification.
Madam President, if I could?
Mayor George.
And just to reiterate, we've discussed at numerous public meetings, the issue is not improving, and it needs to be addressed soon. When we have women changing in men's locker room, we have serious issues with space. So there is a time constraint because we need to make decisions to assist our staff with the issues they're facing daily.
Correct. And just again to reiterate, that even if we pass this now, it would be at least 18 months, if not two years, before this would change for them. So let's make some temporary improvements now. All right, so we have, unless there's further discussion from council members? Councilman Hamilton-Stine?
Madam Chair, if I could reiterate, we absolutely agree. You know, we agree that this process should be public. It has been public. It will continue to be public. But as I've said before, and we've done this past, and I know there's But as I've said before, and we've done this past, and I know there's a lot of new council members up there, and you're learning this process, but a lot of times, an effective conversation can be just one-on-one, discussing details at hand. You know, for a long time, President Keppel and I, about once a month, would meet at a coffee shop and just go over, just discussing various topics. So I'm not sure why this is different than all of these previous discussions. We agree, this should absolutely be public. Our intention is to answer your questions.
Councilwoman Hamilton-Stine? Thank you. There might be some newer folks on council, but I think we are skilled enough and have enough knowledge to know what is going to be best for the public and what the public expects of us. And I expect that the public would expect me to have a deliberation and a conversation of this magnitude in the public. So that is the manner that I am moving in. And again, if there was something that I thought that maybe was, you know, a continuation of the executive session, yes, I would definitely, you know, ask that, make sure that I'm doing what I'm supposed to, right? But I just am not comfortable having that type of conversation for this type of project privately.
Thank you. So, I know we have a meeting scheduled in my office on Wednesday to discuss the pool. Should I cancel that, then, since you don't want to discuss anything privately? All right. Director Byington?
Thank you. Thank you. I just wanted to ask, if council doesn't want to meet privately, that's completely fine. But just so I can have the information ready for the public, I have the questions from the last committee meeting that we're putting together the answers for. But if you have other questions, if there's any way you can get them to me to help the process and to expedite a little bit, and help me prepare to have the right answers for you, if you have questions, if you can get them to me, that would be helpful, so I can get the right answers to you and the public.
Thank you, Director Byington. I appreciate that, and that you're doing your best to answer the questions. I think part of this is, there's a couple of different things happening here. It's not that we can never have one-on-one detailed conversations. It's that the timeline, as Councilmember Evans and I laid out, when we go back to the initial conversations in February, we went from "we need to do something about space, here's the space study, one option is expanding the police department to buy this building." And at that meeting in February, a lot of questions were asked about the addition, and detailed questions. I don't think we got the detailed answers we were looking for to be able to move on from that discussion. And all of that conversation is what we were expecting to happen on the public floor. So, we could-- I would encourage you to go back and watch that video. Councilmembers certainly can address other questions, but I think, you know, we need to have that full information gathering process before we can choose one particular solution. All right. So, we currently have a motion and a second to refer the communication to Committee of the Whole. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Item 12, Resolution 202534, a resolution to take effect immediately authorizing the mayor or director of law to enter into a purchase agreement with LDC Warren Limited and Ohio Limited Liability Company, owner of the property located at 1470 Warren Road, Lakewood, Ohio, and to execute all documents necessary to effectuate the purchase and sale according to the terms of that agreement.
Move to refer to Committee of the Whole.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Item 13, Ordinance 222025, an ordinance to take effect immediately to establish appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Lakewood for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2025.
Move to refer to Committee of the Whole.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Item 14, Communication from Director Byington regarding amended fiscal year 25 HUD Annual Action Plan Resolution 202469A.
Director Byington?
Thank you, President Keppel, and members of council. On May 14th, 2025, HUD informed the city what our 2025 CDBG and ESG allocations were going to be. CDBG is $1,889,338, and ESG is $167,000 and $147. Because Lakewood's HUD Annual Action Plan cannot be submitted until actual funding awards are announced, and the city must adopt budget legislation prior to the end of the current fiscal year, the allocation recommendations approved by Lakewood's Citizen Advisory Committee, which authorizes mayoral submission of Lakewood's FY25 Action Plan to HUD, are based on estimated 2025 CDBG and estimated ESG funding levels. Now that Lakewood's actual federal funding awards have been announced for FY25, the FY25 Annual Action Plan must be amended to include those amounts. To minimize duplication of effort, HUD requires grantees to develop contingency provision language, which is attached to your communication, describing the city's approach to aligning estimated allocations with actual funding awards once they're known. This occurs every year. These guidelines approved by the Citizens and Advisory Committee on September 11th, 2024, were utilized to distribute CDBG dollars and ESG funds received above city estimates as depicted in Exhibit A1. I respectfully, and Mr. Wyman respectfully, submit for council's consideration the Department of Planning and Development's amended FY25 HUD Annual Action Plan Resolution and the Citizen Advisory Committee's final actual FY25 CDBG and ESG allocation recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you. Move to receive and file the communication?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Director Byington?
I apologize. We're requesting that this is passed under emergency, because it has to be submitted by July 14th, by HUD regulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. On the motion to receive and file the communication, Councilwoman Streep.
Thank you. I just had one question for you. I see that when we estimated, we were like at $1.8 million, right? And it came in at like $1.89 million, right? And then, so we have this $90,000. How do we decide which group gets that? I see that the bulk of that went to the Birdtown-Madison Park Connector. I was just wondering, like, you know, does it get broken up over all of them, or how does that decision get made? Thank you.
As stated in the cover letter, HUD requires the city, through its Citizens Advisory Committee, to approve what are called contingency provisions, which are attached, if you look in the correspondence. And that naps out how funds received above or below our estimate will be treated, should we receive funds or above or below $1.8 million. So, in this case, we received about $90,000 above $1.8 million. There's a 15% cap on what we can allocate to public services every year. And so each public service activity received its original share of the 15% of that $90,000, essentially, according to its original share of what it got originally. And then the balance was up to, based on the contingency provisions, which dictated, it was up to DPD staff to determine what the highest and best use for those, the balance of those funds were. And we had a gap in the Birdtown-Madison Park Connector project, and we decided to apply the funds there.
Okay. So the community, the public service, that gets allocated first?
The contingency provisions, yes. Essentially, that is the first order of business.
Okay.
And then the balance is sort of left up to the staff, depending on funding gaps and eligible activities.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the communication? Councilman Bullock?
Thanks, Mr. Wyman, and to the administration. You know, it's a thoughtful process, and a pretty accurate prediction, once again. So $90,000 compared to $1.8 million is a pretty small rounding error. I'm glad that the federal government rounded up rather than the down. Or maybe that's like, I'm going to out myself as a Star Trek fan here, Scotty used to say, how you impress Captain Kirk, is you conservatively estimate how long it takes to fix things. So you underestimate the-- to the best you can, so that we're not short, but we're on the upside. So, my one piece of feedback would be, for the next year, for the coming year, I'd prefer if City Council were consulted on and/or make the decision on any surplus beyond what the social services allocations are. It's reasonable, and it's a good use of the funds that you just described, but you're saying planning staff decide. As a constitutionalist, we just were wearing our constitutional law hats in the meeting prior to this, where we're talking about the charter and the charter power. City Council's supposed to be the budgetary body. I'd prefer strongly if we had some mechanism where there's consultation with City Council, so that, you know, the only other option would be for right now to try to amend the proposal, and I don't think that makes sense right now. So I'd wanted to convey that. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. Any further discussion on the communication? All right. On the motion to receive and file the communication, all those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Item 15, Resolution 202469A, a resolution to take effect immediately amending Resolution 202469, adopted December 18, 2024, authorizing and directing the mayor to submit the fiscal year 25 one-year action plan of the five-year consolidated plan, which includes dollar allocations and activities to be funded with federal CDBG, ESG resources, as well as any other entitlement funds received from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, all amendments thereto, and all understandings and assurances contained therein, and incorporates the city's application to HUD for fiscal year 25 CDBG and ESG funds.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Item 16, June 2025, Finance Department vendor report submitted pursuant to Lakewood codified ordinances 11103.
Move to receive and file.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes. That brings us to the end of the docket, to the public comment section. So, yes, we do have some e-commerce. When I call your name, you can come up to the microphone. If you-- button's red right now, push it so it's green. First person. You'll have up to five minutes to speak. Please state your name, and if you feel comfortable, your address for the record. And like I said, you'll have five minutes. You address the chair, that's me. Avoid personalities. And that's it. Okay, away we go. So first up is Erin Stirr. Please correct me also when you come up here. Right there. Thank you. Stever is my last name, but no worries, it happens all the time. I just want to thank you for this time. My name is Erin Stever. I'm a congressional representative and caseworker for Congresswoman Chantel Brown's office. I just wanted to go into a little bit of what our office can offer constituents, whether that be casework, and that's from anything, from the VA, from IRS, from Social Security, any federal agency, we can either assist or inquire upon issues constituents having. Additionally, we do help with grants. Federal grants are very important to us. We want to make sure that we are able to give as much money back to the communities that we serve. And then I kind of want to just come over some of the events and upcoming awards and stuff that we're doing with the office. Upcoming, we have the Congressional App Challenge. So if you know anyone who is a middle schooler or high schooler who is interested in creating an app, please go onto our website, and there is a form to fill out, and the winner of the competition, their app gets displayed in Congress. Next, we have Service Academy nominations. If you know anyone who is interested in serving our country and going to a military academy, whether that's West Point or the Naval Academy, our office is here, and we offer nominations. Those are due, the paperwork is due, is in mid-November, so plenty of time for that. And as well, Congressional Award. If you know anyone who is interested in a Congressional Award, this is for middle school, high school students. Again, a big emphasis on public service, personal development, physical fitness, and expedition and exploration. I'm not sure quite what that is, but you can log onto our website, and we have more information on there. And if there are any questions, I'll be here in the back. And if you do have any questions, or you'd like follow-up from our office, you can go and submit casework at chantelbrown.house.gov, or give our office a call. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. I think Vice President Baker has a question for you.
Yeah, thank you for coming and sharing. Out of curiosity, is there like a limited amount of recommendations that each representative has for the service academies, or is it unlimited?
Sure. We get 10. And that number depends on how many are already in the academies, and then there's a surplus number that you can recommend for it. So I do believe we have six right now that we're looking to recommend.
Great, thank you. I had friends that went there, and it's a great way to serve your country and get a great education, so thank you.
Thank you. Go Army, beat Navy. Thank you. I think Councilman Bullock--
Oh, Navy.
[laughing] Councilman Bullock.
Pardon me. Thank you for being here. If I could get your business card and trade information, that'd be great. Does your office also help with passports if there's delay?
Yes. I actually do passports. That's one of my casework portfolios. More than willing to help out. We get calls all the time about passport stuff, so it's-- no, I won't say it's an easy fix, depending on what the situation is, but it's certainly something we can look into for you.
Okay, and thank you. We know the Congresswoman well, but it's great. Thank you for taking the effort to come here, and I'm sure there are many ways in which advocacy with the federal government, we had one just today, discussion about whether HUD formulas could be adjusted so that the investment made in our community, which is vitally important, and we appreciate it, could have more success at achieving the intended goals. So that's a big one. Thank you.
Absolutely. Anyone else? Thank you. Other councilmembers? Thank you so much for being here and sharing the information.
All right. Thank you much.
Thank you. All right. Next up is Mr. Zachem.
I should know this by now. So, good evening again. So, I am here to point out that 10 days from now, we are going to find out how many people were unable to afford their second half of real estate taxes. I'm unfortunately expecting grim results. I believe President Keppel was quoted in the media that Lakewood has residents that, with the first energy issues, can't afford to replace their groceries. So I wonder if they're going to be able to pay their property taxes. I frequently walk my dog around Lakewood, and as I look around, I'm seeing more homes with unkempt lawns, peeling paint, lack of maintenance. I wonder, were they able to pay their real estate taxes? And for those who have been able to, I wonder what they have given up. You know, did they give up a family vacation, perhaps a contribution to their kid's college fund? The list could go on. Personally, with the increase in taxes, I find myself doing more work on my own properties and postponing things where I have to hire out, and crossing my fingers that nothing bad happens. It's not only bad for me, but it's bad for my contractors, who don't have the income and don't have the ability to pass it on to their employees. I definitely appreciate City Council's skepticism towards large investment in some form of City Hall, whatever that may be, especially in this day and age where I'm getting more and more people coming to me and asking how they're going to pay their taxes. And-- And there's about 1,000 more just like me that are having the same conversation statewide. I, I heard that city council is looking at changes to the charter, and once again, I'd like to remind city council that, you know, we are paying property taxes through the charter. And if I look at Cogge County's own reports, city council, where Lakewood is going to collect about $4.8 million more this year than last. You know, maybe some of it's needed. I have no doubt our sewers need work, but other things, I'm more skeptical. And I would encourage city council not to just look into ranked choice voting, but, you know, our charter levies being funded at appropriate levels, you know, especially when we're worried about citizens not being able to replace their groceries. And for those who have concerns with property taxes, I, I would encourage them to come visit me Wednesday evenings, 6 to 8 p.m., 15635 Madison Avenue. If you're interested in signing the amendment to repeal property taxes, if you're uncertain, that's, that's fine. I would encourage you to come by and have a civilized discussion, but there's lots of people like me that are, you know, fed up with the state legislature, you know, having time for the Browns, and plenty of other issues that I wouldn't have enough time to cover, you know, rather than dealing with the people's actual issues, which do not include football. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up is Robbie Organ.
I'd like to start by thanking Public Works. I saw we've got some green paint at Hilliard in Madison, so that's great. It's a small step, but we're getting there slowly but surely. I'd also like to thank the city for, both the administration and city council, for continuing to push on the case and the Complete Streets. We need this done. King of the Hill starts in less than a month. Let's get it done. Okay, now to the real issue. I'm here to respond to a comment that I heard last week at this meeting, at the committee of the whole meeting, that I find incredibly irresponsible and flatly incorrect. A statement was made that it is not reasonable for somebody at the, in the phase of life, it's not practical, not possible, as a parent, to rely on active transportation or transportation outside of a car. I don't talk about this a lot. I grew up in Marysville, Ohio. At the time, the population was about 16,000 to 20,000, and my dad got arrested several times for drug use while driving. So for almost a year, my sister and I, my sister's five years younger than I am, my sister and I would have to get up and walk two-plus miles across town through the winter, through all kinds of weather, to go to my mom's house in the morning before we went to school, before my dad went to work. My dad's still, to this day, not doing great financially. He can't afford a car. He relies on sharing transportation with my grandpa, who he lives with. And that's in a, in a city that has no public transportation whatsoever. I understand that people make choices, and people sometimes have choices forced upon them, but to say that it's not practical or not possible for somebody in any particular phase of life in Lakewood, Ohio, where there's transit, where we have some bike infrastructure and everything is closely packed together, I just cannot understand how that is a reasonable statement to make here. I think it is damaging to a lot of the people that are required, because they can't afford a car, to get their family, themselves, whoever it might be, where they need to go throughout the day. Some people, yes, they, they work far, far enough away that taking transit or taking a bike or something like that is not reasonable, and that's fine, but there are thousands of people that either make choices or don't have a choice, and they have to get around without a car. So I am encouraging you to please, please, please pass this Complete Streets ordinance quickly. And with regard to the case, there does not need to be somebody that specifically has lived experience as a driver in Lakewood. Almost everybody else that you put on that board will have that experience. I myself, you know, I've, I've been in the military for 16 years. I have to drive to Columbus tomorrow because, like the last speaker just pointed out, the state is willing to give $600 million to an already wealthy billionaire for the Brown Stadium, but we can't fund trains so I can get to Columbus without a car. So, you know, I don't know what we're doing in the state, but Lakewood can be a progressive bastion in a sea of red and do something about our transportation system. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Allison Welch.
Hi, good evening, members of council. I'm Allison Welch, 1656 Orchard Grove. First, I want to thank you for your responsiveness about the front yard garden issue. I've been a part of a few emails, and people have come to my house to see the gardens since, since I brought it up last week in the last meeting. So, and also, thank you for engaging in an open conversation about front yard gardens. So it means a lot to see this level of thoughtfulness and responsiveness to our concerns. So as I understand it, Lakewood ordinances already permit the use of front yard gardens for growing plants other than turf grass, but maybe I'm mistaken on that. So long as sidewalks are clear, visibility is maintained, and there's no noxious weeds. This framework seems to already support safe and vibrant front yard gardens. So from my own experience over the last five years maintaining a native-planted front yard, I've had no safety incidents, and in most cases, you can see pasture around my plants. And so the aesthetic and environmental benefits outweigh the perceived risks, in my opinion. So Lakewood is home to many creative and beautiful front yard gardens. They're part of what gives our city its character and charm. In fact, many of them are proudly featured in the Garden Walk Lakewood, and they help make our city a beautiful place that people want to live in and visit. So I just, you know, I think at the last meeting, I mentioned something about the setbacks being an issue, and, and I like the conversations that have come up about that. I think it'll be interesting to see where the ordinance goes from here. So in the face of climate change, we need to encourage more sustainable land use, not just in public parks, but in our own front yards. Turf grass, while common, is not sustainable because it requires frequent watering, chemical fertilizers, herbicides, and it provides almost no support for pollinators or wildlife. Lakewood is uniquely positioned on the southern shore of Lake Erie and is a critical stopover point for bird and insect migrations, so our yards do matter. Rather than restrict our front yard plantings, I encourage us to go further. Let's incentivize native plants, reduce pesticide use, allow fallen leaves to be used as natural mulch, and even set these practices as an example on city property. Once again, thank you for supporting front yard gardens. I urge you to continue these conversations, not just to preserve Lakewood's unique charm, but to help build a more sustainable and resilient future. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next, Carrie Anne McBride.
Hello, and thank you for the time. I, my husband and I moved here 16 months ago. We fell in love with the area. We have family in Rocky River, and we were so excited. Bought a century-old home, put well over 100 grand into renovations, and then the power started going out. And we were warned, that's going to happen, you know, a few times. It's, it's part of the charm, you'll get used to it. Okay, we, we expected that. Then the tornadoes hit, and we lost our power for five days. You know what? I grew up in a hurricane area. No problem. I was still good. I was uncomfortable. We slept on the sleeping porch so that we could actually sleep without feeling like we were dying in the heat. Then December hit. I've lost count of how many times we have lost power. I have medications that need to be refrigerated. I have two dogs and three cats. One of the dogs and one of the cats is my daughters, who moved in with us in February. The other dog and the other two cats, we brought them here from Wisconsin. We can't just leave our home to find somewhere climate-controlled and leave our pets behind, so we stick it out with them. Every time we lose power for over a day, we lose everything in our fridge. We end up having to replace it. Fortunately, we have insurance that we submit our claim, they reimburse us for up to $500, they give it to us within an hour, and we're good. We can replace our food. And we are not, we are above the average. There are too many people, the elderly, the disabled, and the low-income, who are struggling right now. And I am really, I came in here feeling hopeful, and the tone of this meeting has taken some terms where I feel like no wonder we're having a problem just keeping power on. There's so much infighting over topics that aren't about things like keeping the power on, and I get it. They are also very important topics. They are very important, no argument. There should definitely be more room for the LPD to do the important work they do. And making certain that there is a building that will meet that need is also very important, and I can sympathize with the timeline of that being something that people are trying to hurry through in order to get that building. At the same time, we have a pyramid here, and the people in this community are not getting a, some basic needs met. It's hard to worry about things like that. When your power keeps shutting off, your medications are going bad, so then you have to wonder, okay, so do I just struggle to replace those meds, or do I roll the dice and keep using them even though they sat in a fridge for a day and a half with no power? I volunteer for one of the local food banks here. I take my time to volunteer so that groceries can be bagged for people that are low-income. All of those places are struggling to meet the extra needs that are happening now. I am, I do not even know what to do at this point, because while I myself have my little bit of struggles, there are people who are struggling a lot more. And I didn't hear anything about that at this meeting. And I don't know whether it's just that it's not a concern, it's, that's just a smaller concern for smaller people, or what just happened here, but I'm, I'm just kind of at a loss. And I don't know if maybe there's a different place I should be going to ask questions or to get involved. I just know that this didn't feel like it addressed a very basic concern of the community, which is, how, how do we fix that? So that's it, that's all I got.
Thank you. I do want to, so a couple of things. Thank you for being here and sitting through the entire meeting to be able to make your comment.
Completely understandable.
So a couple of things. One, in terms, first, we, this, not just this body, the administration, members of the administration, we are all extremely aware and concerned about this issue. The challenge is, as was alluded to, well, there's many challenges. One of the many challenges, as we discussed with the State House prioritization, is that the utilities, the municipal government has pretty much no authority over utilities. The Public Utilities Commission of Ohio does have oversight. Unfortunately, the Public Utilities Commission of Ohio are appointed by the Ohio governor, the same Ohio governor who took bribes from First Energy. So just to lay that context out there. That does not mean we are not fighting. In fact, even despite what you saw today, Mayor George and I attended a meeting Friday together advocating with the city, Cleveland City Council members, members of the administration here, Director Gordon was there, other members of, with First Energy, of trying to get answers. It's extremely rare for them to meet with municipalities because they don't care, they don't have to, but they did, mostly because of the pressure put on by Mayor George and the Cleveland City Council members that she sent that letter, the public letter you may have seen, urging members of the public to contact the Public Utilities Commission of Ohio.
And I, I did. Last weekend, I filled out a complaint.
Thank you.
Yep.
So, and, so we, enough people did that, that I think we got some level of pressure. We got some information about, for what it's worth, about what they claim to be some of the big ongoing issues. I'm not an electrical engineer, so it's difficult for me to regurgitate that information to the public, which is why I, once again, at that meeting, asked them to come to a city council meeting and explain to the public on the public record, as we were talking about today, and explain to everyone why this has been happening and what they're doing to address it, in their own words. Mayor George asked them to put out information in their own words about what has been going on, and to explain everything that they explained to us in that meeting about what their plans are to fix it. So we had that meeting, and then, no, so that was last, Thursday, I guess, would have been, and then, and then all the, and then power went out again. So, so we've been reaching out to them again, trying to get more answers about those specific power outages, and they had assured us that the fixes that they'd put in place would, we wouldn't have any more problems, barring acts of God, of course, but here we are. So all that to say, just please rest assured that as far as, it is not that it is not of top of mind, it is that it is not on our docket, because, one, the docket gets done a week in advance, and, two, we have no authority to do anything, essentially, except to advocate strongly, and that is what we are doing. And so we're going to continue to ask them to come here and answer the public's questions. So I'm going to continue to push for that. I saw Mayor George send an email today to First Energy again, so we're going to continue to push. I'm sure all the members of this body will continue to do that as well, but, and when the members of the public also reach out to PUCO, it is the, the best, most effective thing we can do. And also ask First Energy to come here. Ask them that, too, is what I would say.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. All right.
If I could add, too, as the council president mentioned, I did send an email today requiring detailed information on the outages over this weekend. I did copy in PUCO in my email to First Energy because I want them to be aware of all of these outages. I did have a conversation with Jennifer Friend, she's the chair of PUCO. They have begun their investigation. They will not stick to a timeline because it's, depends on the depth and breadth, which I've asked for it to be very detailed, so I am hopeful. I also have a meeting scheduled with the governor's office, so he was, his office was copied on the communication to PUCO originally, so, you know, no stone is being left unturned. The challenge is I don't have control over it. I think you may have seen me on media say if I could climb up the pole, I would. You know, if, if there's a pothole here, we can fix it. If there's an emergency, we can respond to it. But we don't have control, but we're pulling every lever that we can to hold First Energy accountable.
Thank you. All right. Last signed in is Erin Moorhead.
It's pretty difficult to follow up such a powerful cause as that. I do have one small thing, so it should be pretty quick. Imagine this, mirrors at the end of driveways, and not just any mirrors, convex mirrors. I say this in reference to my apartment building, but I've seen it in many places along, like Detroit's and Madison Avenue. I live down across, this is more like that way, across from St. Anne's High School, and the driveway exiting my building, which has rear parking, is very narrow, one-car kind of thing, right? And because the building is set so close up to the sidewalk, there's no way to see around the corner, and I can't tell And I can't tell you how many times I've got very narrow to hitting children going to school on their bikes who aren't the most cautious. Or even adults walking their very small dogs. And I drive a Honda Civic, so it's not like it's that high up. And I think that this could be immediately alleviated by just having a mirror posted up at the end of the driveway. That shows the sidewalk, that shows the traffic coming out, because it's not just people, but it's cars coming. To the point where in my e-comment, I mentioned, I've taken up looking at St. Ed's glass that they just installed recently on their cafeteria. To kind of make sure that no oncoming traffic is coming. Because I can't see down the corner, I can't see past the cars that park directly in front. And this is kind of a common occurrence. You know, I like to ride my bike, I like to go for walks. There's many places where I've been almost hit because people are coming out of their driveways where they can't see from either side. And this is a very quick thing, you know. I pull out in front of a driveway, I mean, I try to keep my head on a swivel. But it's not always going to be on the forefront of my mind and other people aren't thinking that at all, you know. Like I said, this happens very frequently. I try to leave to go to work in the morning. At that same time, kids are going down to Garfield. Some of these kids are my former students and I would really appreciate not hitting them because that's a very awkward conversation to have. You know, hey, how's it going? Sorry that you just leapt five feet off your bike whenever my car crept out. I'm doing my best, but I really think that we should either have mirrors installed to increase safety on the streets. Or at least like mandate, you know, building owners to install said mirrors. I think it would just make things better. That's about it, really. Don't tell my landlord I said this.
Thank you. Thank you so much. All right.
Yes, Councilman Bullock.
Thanks. I, I tend to agree with the gentleman who just spoke and actually, I wish Allison Welch, who spoke about front yard gardens, was here too. Because that thought occurred to me about sightlines on front yard gardens. So, let's, you know, I'll, I'll be happy to follow up on, on that. I. I don't know if it's a code requirement. Certainly is advisable in a lot of places, but, but it's, it's an idea worth pursuing. I just wanted to say before the evening concludes, thank you to the council staff for a great. City Hall, excuse me, City Council Board One Town Hall meeting. I thought that was good. Thank you, Councilwoman Keppel for initiating and really courting that. Councilman Baker for emceeing it and being the lead. And then, and then just also, am I, am I not on? Great. Thank you to the City Hall staff for a fantastic July 4th, the fire department for the fireworks. Police for safety in all directions and the public works for making a beautiful park and beautiful cleanup. And so it was another great day. And thanks to Melissa Garrett for her fifth July 4th. I'm joking, I'm, I'm not sure exact number, but it certainly is quite a high one and she does a great job every time, so. I'm going to convey that. Thank you.
Thank you. That was actually my next, my first announcement was doing that same thing and also, that's okay. It, it bears repeating our thanks to the city staff for, and safety forces. Everyone, I saw members of other departments help joining Melissa's team, everybody chipping in, so really appreciated. We had incredible turnout this year, I think, for the parade and keeping everyone safe and. Happy, it was very impressive.
All right, announcements from other council, Councilman Evans.
Thank you, Chair. Just to follow up on the great meeting we had for Ward One, July 22nd at 6:00 p.m. at the main branch of Lakewood Public Library. Be the Ward Two Community Conversation, so stop out and I hope to see you there. Thank you.
Thank you. And for those who aren't familiar, the community conversations, the ward council member and the three at large will be there and. You can ask us questions, here, get some updates, give us your ideas. It's a much more informal conversation than this setting, so we're able to just kind of engage, which is really nice.
All right, other announcements from council members, announcements from the administration, Director Gordon.
Thank you, President Keppel. I just want to thank police and fire again for a great July 4th and a special shout out to the Public Works employees for. Getting the park ready to go the following day and open and making it seem like absolutely nothing went on the night before. So it's a long night, so thank you.
Thank you. Vice President Baker.
Yeah, I'd like to, I, I went to the pool early that next morning. You know, the park looked great. And I know as a summer job at Huntington, 4th of July is the weekend where trash comes everywhere, explodes in the park, so appreciate it. Other, Wednesday night, I think at 6:00, is Norton and Northland Public Meeting. On the lead and lead pipe replacement and street redoing, right? Is that correct?
Correct. On Wednesday night here in the city auditorium will be the Water Main, 2025 Water Main Project Resident Meeting. So yes, that has to do with everything from water line replacement, lead line replacement to street resurfacing, you name it, yes.
Right, yeah, so that's, that's Norton and then Northland.
Thank you. All right, any further announcements? All right, with that, without objection, we are adjourned.